Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to give the 30-second warning and we're going to get started in 30 seconds because we do have seven people around the room. We just need them at the table. So ladies and gentlemen, we are going to get started and because we do have seven people in the room and so we have a quorum and we have all of our incredible staff here ready to talk about budget. Before I kick off this this work session, what I would like to do is have Ms. Tolan do a quick review on our next step process that we continuously try to reform, to improve upon.
Great, thank you. For board members, I have a number of things around next steps that I need to call your attention to. One, if you recall, the next step document from our work session last week on the CIP, please make sure by the end of the day today that you have gone in and taken a look and given your consent on any of those next steps. And please go in and take a look because I know there are some changes to some of the next steps when I went back in as people went in and added things or changed things slightly. This work session on the budget, I know we have a whole way of putting through budget questions, but what we would like to do today, given where we are in the budget process, is any questions that you have around the budget that come up today, please put it into the next step document that we have today, posted today for next steps. And then what we will do is people will have until, I think we'll use our usual timeframe until Friday to enter any questions that they have from the work session today. And then we'll have until early next week to react to all of those next steps. And also from just our previous discussion on the calendar, same thing, make sure you use the next step document to put in there any questions or additional information that you need in order to, you know, vote in good conscience in a couple of weeks on the calendar. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And folks, for those of you who haven't heard me say this, it is an absolute joy to be partnering with Ms. Tolan on the Budget Committee. So we are having fun. Okay. So I'm very pleased, as I just provided a slight intro on my collegial relationship with Ms. Tolan, I'm also very pleased with how the budget development process for fiscal year '23 has gone thus far. As you may recall, Ms. Tolan and I solicited your budget priorities this past fall, and we developed a budget resolution that echoed those priorities, both in one-on-one discussions as well as what we realized in our work sessions. So that process, we're going to continue today. The superintendent has provided his fiscal year '23 proposed budget, which reflects an increase that focuses on compensation and the basic strength, strategic needs of the school division. Proposed funding increases align with areas identified by this school board's budget resolution. As I said on Thursday night, the superintendent's proposed budget request from the county is a decrease from the budget included in the fiscal forecast, and it's largely attainable because of the revenue, increased revenue by the federal government and expected increases in state revenue coupled with expenditure reductions due to enrollment. The fiscal year '23 proposed budget reflects the decrease in student enrollment while investing in our staff to ensure that we are able to attract and retain the best and the brightest. It also recognizes that COVID has had an impact on our student achievement and invest in programs necessary for the 21st century learning, as well as a recognition that we need to invest in our operations. It is a good news budget that reflects the needs of FCPS. Today is the beginning of our process with a work session on the superintendent's proposed budget. We also have a public hearing next week on January 24th and a second budget work session on February 8th, which will include a discussion of potential school board amendments to the advertised budget, the advertised proposal. The adoption of the fiscal year '23 advertised budget is slated for February 24th. The first item on the agenda today is a presentation by Human Resources in response to the follow-ons approved last spring. Additionally, Dr. Braybrand and his leadership team members are here to respond to any clarifying questions asked at the presentation Thursday night, as well as any new questions you might have today. Remember, our goal is to approve a budget proposal, an advertised budget, on February 24th and deliver to the local governing body, the Board of Supervisors, a budget that meets the needs of FCPS in the upcoming year. Now I'll turn over, turn the meeting over to our Chief Operating Officer Marty Smith for an introductory comments before the Human Resources review on the market analysis of family liaisons and bus drivers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are glad to be here this afternoon to bring you, I just want to make sure it is afternoon, to bring you the compensation study. I believe that Ms. Cohen asked some questions about it at the work session the other evening. And so we're bringing forward the compensation study for our bus drivers, our attendants, and our family liaisons. I'm going to turn things over here to Assistant Superintendent Sean McDonald here in a moment and his Director for the Office of Budget Service or Benefit Services, D. Holly Brown. Their staff, I said Budget Services accidentally, their staff, in the midst of all that we've been doing here, working with our employees with COVID, their staff has done a marvelous job of providing this data for the board to review today. And so with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mr. McDonald and are certainly looking forward to questions about the recommendations for our bus drivers, for our attendants, and our family liaisons.
All right. Good afternoon. All right. This afternoon, I'll present an overview of a detailed compensation study completed by our Classification and Compensation Team in our Office of Benefit Services. I would like to refer the school board and members of the public who are listening to the detailed report. It's about 42 pages, I believe, that can be found in Board Docs. It has a great deal of detail. Prior to covering today's content, I would like to just take a moment to acknowledge and thank members of our HR team, Ms. Patty Mayer and Mr. Haroon Rashid, who are in the back for all of their work as it relates to this compensation study, along with Ms. Holly Brown here at the table, as well as our partners in the Office of Budget Services and the Offices of Professional Learning and Family Engagement and Transportation Services. Next slide, please. So in May of 2021, as part of the budget adoption process, two follow-on motions were passed by the board. One motion, proposed by Ms. Bukarski, requested a comparative analysis of bus driver and transportation attendant salaries and benefits amongst the Washington Area Boards of Education, also known as WABE, school districts. Another motion, proposed by Dr. Anderson, requested a comparative analysis for the family liaison salaries and benefits amongst WABE school districts. These motions served as the guidelines for these studies. So if we think about a compensation study as a snapshot of conditions at a certain point in time, it's critical that we examine factors that impact that particular snapshot. At the macro level, the nationwide employment picture is currently being impacted by several significant forces, to include the COVID pandemic, expansion of the gig economy, and the great resignation. The ongoing COVID-19 pandemic has created conditions that raise health concerns amongst the labor force, accelerated and normalized the use of remote work, increased the volume and complexity of work, and shifted the personal priorities of much of the labor force. A labor market characterized by the prevalence of short-term contracts or freelance work as opposed to permanent jobs, also known as the gig economy, continues to grow at a very rapid pace. A 2021 survey conducted by Mastercard indicated that by 2023, the gig economy will grow globally by 17%. This rapid growth translates into a variety of jobs available in the market for individuals who are seeking greater amounts of flexibility in terms of work hours and work arrangements. This certainly places immense pressure on employers who continue to provide services that through perhaps no choice of their own are providing services in a more traditional model during a traditional workday. Additionally, the Bureau of Labor Statistics reported that approximately 12% of the total U.S. workforce has voluntarily left their positions as part of a phenomenon known as the Great Resignation. That translates to approximately four million workers leaving their jobs each month, including the months of August, September, October, and November of this past year. Prior to outlining the process that the team used as they conducted the study, let's just take a quick moment to review some of the key terms. First, market pricing. Market pricing is a process undertaken by compensation staff to set pay structures by collecting, analyzing, and matching job salary data to determine rates paid in the external market. Next, we have environmental scan, which is the process undertaken by compensation staff to collect a broad scope of data relating to the current employment market and comparators. And then finally, market position, which for FCPS, the division's market position goal, as previously set by the board, is 95 to 105% of the market midpoint. This is the standard applied when examining position market competitiveness. The compensation team engaged in a multi-step process to collect the data needed to make an assessment of where each of the three studied positions, again, our bus drivers, our transportation attendants, and our family liaisons, fell within the market and to develop a set of recommendations. The first step in that process was market pricing. As part of this step, the team surveyed WABE divisions to collect compensation data and recruitment and retention strategies that have been applied, especially during this difficult time navigating the COVID pandemic. The second step in the process was to conduct an environmental scan. The scan included data collection around changes in the workforce, details of national shortages, and possible causes of those national shortages. Some of the findings yielded by this research included staggering 81% of districts across the nation reporting shortages in the bus driver position. Many of those districts said that they had 30 to 50% fewer drivers than that were needed to transport students safely. We also saw evidence in some of the national headlines, which included Massachusetts mobilizing their National Guard to transport students due to the lack of bus drivers. My understanding is a neighboring county is also currently facing a similar situation. Some of the possible causes for the shortages at the national level include health concerns related to the pandemic. As more significantly impacted segments of the population are part of the labor force that comprises, typically comprises, our bus driver population. So the average age of a bus driver across the nation is 56 years old, whereas the median age of an individual occupying positions in general is 42. We know that we've heard that the COVID can impact certain segments of our population more significantly. COVID also translated to backlogs at DMVs and processing CDLs. Folks had to wait long time, a long time to get appointments to access that service at the DMV. The third step was conducting analysis and validation. As part of the analysis, the compensation team looked at the national data and gathered internal employee data to determine if they could identify the same markers of areas of concern. As part of the validation, the compensation team acquired position data from applicable departments and sought feedback regarding proposed recommendations to include the viability of implementation. So now let's dive into the data. When we compare the bus driver position to the WABE market, the position was, is within the established market goal of 95 to 105%, falling at 101% of the market midpoint. Let me share how we got to that midpoint for our bus drivers. The overall market was the WABE jurisdictions' market data. Given the fact that FCPS has both a current and an old transportation pay plan and a bus driver one and a bus driver two position, we arrived at the midpoint by averaging the minimum and maximum for bus drivers one and two in the current pay plan, which currently has more than 600 bus drivers participating in it. The rationale for using this particular plan is it is the largest population of bus drivers, and it is the pay plan that is available to any newly hired bus drivers to our organization. And it places, it normalizes the pay to allow for that comparison to be made with the WABE market. While compensation is currently within market, similar to districts across the nation, it's important to acknowledge and understand that FCPS continues to see shortages in this particular position. On December 1st, 166 of our bus driver positions, approximately 14% of our positions, were vacant. Additionally, 60 drivers were out on approved leave. While the issue at the DMV continues to resolve, it's important to know that those CDL backlogs due to limited access to the Department of Motor Vehicles did contribute some to our driver shortages early on. Again, I would like to reference the written report that's attached in Board Docs for additional details as it relates to the data for our bus driver study. When comparing our transportation attendant position to the WABE market, the position is within the established market goal of 95 to 105%, falling at 100% of the market midpoint. To date, there hasn't been consistent recruitment challenges with this position, as evidenced by the fact that there were no transportation attendant vacancies on December 1st. When comparing the family liaison position to the WABE market, the position is outside of the established market goal of 95 to 105%, falling at 82% of the market midpoint. It's important to note that the current position is comprised of 30% contracted hourly positions and 70% part-time hourly paid positions. This blend stems from the fact that there are grant funds that are used to support roles in a number of schools to meet this need. While it allows for flexibility, or the scheduling, or the types of positions or the scheduling allows for flexibility, it does create some challenges from a management standpoint. Most recently, there are some intermittent challenges with recruiting family liaisons, most likely attributable to the increase in the budget allocation for this role tied to the ESAR grant. These ESAR dollars resulted in broader school supports and assured the position is implemented in all FCPS schools. As of December 1st, 2021, 44 of the 261, or approximately 17% of contracted and hourly positions were vacant. Part of the study did also center around comparing the benefits offered for these positions compared with the WABE market. While benefits are similar to those offered by other WABE divisions, there are some exceptions. For instance, the family liaison position, in other jurisdictions, they utilize a primarily a contracted model, which allows for additional benefit supports for those individual employees. When we examine the retirement benefits for all three positions, FCPS offers retirement benefits through the county's EFSR's retirement system, whereas other WABE divisions utilize state retirement programs. In Virginia, the VRS program, and in Maryland, the Maryland State Pension System. Based on the analysis of data collected via the market pricing and environmental scans, coupled with the feedback provided through the validation step in this process, the compensation team drafted a set of recommendations which address aspects of recruitment and retention to include our compensation strategy. The recommendations on this slide are applicable to all three studied positions, our bus drivers, our transportation attendants, and our family liaisons. In walking through those quickly, the first recommendation focuses on forming a collaborative work group to address continuing recruitment and retention needs for these positions, and investment in career pipelines to allow upskilling of our current employees as an incentive as they're continue to be employed, exploring ways to continue to broaden our recruitment outreach and the methodologies by which we accomplish that, to reach more individuals and to appeal to greater or more broad demographics than we currently are able to do, and revisiting our approach to the application and use of data collected through our exit surveys with a potential focus on these particular positions. Specific to our bus drivers, looking at increasing the sub-driver pool by reducing the rehire window to a 30-day post-retirement window. This, creating a larger subpool will help to reduce the strain by limiting the number of doublebacks and the need for supervisors to cover runs. This helps meet some of those immediate needs. Consideration to altering the established compensation strategy to address recruitment and retention needs, which may include a compensation premium approach, such as retention bonuses for those affected by scale changes executed in the fall, or an altered market goal, recognizing the standard market goal of 95 to 105% may not be in FCPS's best interest for this segment of the workforce, given the significant shortages being experienced across the country. Or give consideration to establishing extended contracts, and that might be longer days or greater number of workdays that allow for different compensation structures. Working with state officials to streamline the process to attain the CDL specific to the school bus driver role, recognizing that transporting students may have different requirements or needs versus transporting goods or other items as part of the CDL attainment process. And then further review and analysis of current bus routes, walk zones, start times, and bus driver training programs to ensure that we're maximizing in every one of those aspects. For our transportation attendants, it's recommended that we continue to monitor on an ongoing basis to ensure, one, that we're continuing to attract, a strong pool of applicants and the position remains fully staffed. For our family liaisons, it's recommended that consider For our family liaisons, it's recommended that consideration be given to increasing compensation based on budgetary availability to bring the position within the established FCPS market goal. Additionally, consideration should be given to simplifying the staffing practice for this position. FCPS has recognized the importance of this role and how critical communication between the division, students, and their families is, and we need to ensure that we're continuing to keep those lines of communication open to maximize student learning and engagement. A family liaison in every school ensures that there is a bridge for division messaging into the wider community. In terms of next steps, the recommendations are, one, that we do form those collaborative work groups to address recruitment and retention needs for the three studied positions. Secondly, improving the compensation structure for our family liaisons to bring the position within market. A $2 million placeholder has been established for that purpose. Create a larger substitute bus driver pool by allowing for rehire of retired drivers after 30 days of separation. And then, fourth, to address the ongoing challenges with our bus driver recruitment, establish a retention bonus for our current veteran drivers while the work group considers additional action potentially for the future. And with that, I will turn things back over to Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you very much, Mr. McDonald. We do have a couple of board members who have already expressed an interest in speaking. I first have Ms. Keys-Gamaro, followed by, oh, okay, well, then I have Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this information, and, you know, I've been bugging you for it, so very much appreciated. I'm going to jump a little bit into the family liaison piece. You were talking about the percentage that's contracted or non-contracted. Can we go back to that slide? I'm trying to get a sense of how does one, how do you decide who falls into what camp, whether they're contracted? Is this a site decision? I'd like to start there.
Sure, so I'll start that off, and I'm not sure if any folks from the Office of Professional Learning and Family Engagement are on, so they might be able to add to the answer. But ultimately, it's really, my understanding has been a direct result of the funding structures for the position. So, there are grant funds that are utilized to, as part of the funding structure, and ultimately, up until 2017, I had to make sure, 2017, we used that hourly, part-time role exclusively. And then, at that point in time, the school board did take action to approve bringing onboard, or establishing, rather, those contracted hourly positions for a portion of that population. And at that time, because of, again, the funding influences, the decision was made that individuals that were at 35 hours, I believe it was, would then transition to that contracted hourly position. As funding allowed, additional positions were brought onboard, but as you can see, we've made it to that 30% threshold at this point.
Okay, I'm going to come back to that in just a little while. I want to go to, I guess, your main report, page 28. I don't know what the corresponding PowerPoint is. You talked about for some changes to the job description. That's, I guess, one of the recommendations. Let me see. As a result, anticipating experiences recruiting human resources revise the job description. What were those changes? Because I understand the job description for a family liaison kind of expanded much more beyond its original scope.
Sure, so, one of the things that we looked at, especially in light of some of the challenges we were facing this particular year, was to look at the minimum qualification standard for individuals occupying the role, provide some greater flexibility in terms of what experience might be considered to meet that minimum qualification. And I turn things to Ms. Holly Brown. I don't know if there's additional things that I'm missing there.
Got it, just trying. So, can I get some examples when you said you kind of looked at the minimum qualifications?
Sure, so I think we were focused on trying to broaden the definition of what would be allowed as credible service to meet the minimum qualification, that particular aspect of it. So, allowing for volunteer experience and other adjacent work experiences was incorporated or folded into the definition within the job description.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to go to page 29, where one of your recommendations is to increase compensation, potentially as much as 18%. Is this something that we are anticipating seeing in next year in the FY23 budget? Because I know that the superintendent had that placeholder. Family liaisons?
Yes, we have a placeholder. Yes, we have a placeholder of $2 million to be able to address implementation or be able to fund implementation of the recommendation that HR has made for family liaisons.
And what would be required for that? I guess you'll just embed that into his budget? Do we need to put forward an amendment, or after this conversation, you'll make those changes?
We have the placeholder, and so, once HR and others decide about the implementation on exactly how we're going to do this, then it'll go into the budget as a distribution as needed.
Thank you. Also on that page, you talked about flexibility to attract new folks, which I think is important, because when I took a look at that graph in terms of the age of the family liaisons, you know, most of them are looking at, you know, retirement, I think, 71% from 50 to 69. That's a whole lot of our groups, and the reason why I'm so adamant about this is because I know the value that they bring to our schools and making sure that our parents are participating. And you mentioned here, to attract that new demographic, providing flexibility such as telework. Is this going to be a central or centrally developed plan, or is it going to be by school? Because I worry about that a little bit.
Yeah, so as part of our recommendation, I think we would need to follow up with the folks in OPLFE to identify, providing principals or program managers with an outline of ways that they can provide for that flexibility. So, not necessarily a mandate, but rather looking for opportunities to embed that within the work structure or the workday for those individuals. So, it's about providing that support and those guideposts for them at this point in time.
Thank you. Going back to, oh, the light threw me off. Going back to my original question regarding contracted and hourly employees, are we anticipating that there'll be a change to that employee group for a greater percentage to be contracted, given the changes that are about to happen? Because I know it's based on hours, and ESER funds are being utilized to increase their hours. So, how will we then substitute that for budgeted compensation, which therefore may bump them into that contracted bucket?
So, I think, and I see Alice is going to want to weigh in on this, and so, I think there's a kind of a blended approach to this, and ultimately, the folks that oversee the program in our Office of Professional Learning and Family Engagement would help to lead the effort to establish that delineation. And I don't know, Ms. Wiggington, did you want to add to that?
So, just a couple of things. So, the $2 million would have tried to account for an assumption in terms of maximizing the number of people that could move to a full contracted position. But just as a reminder for the board, we did have ESER money for that one year, and we have included that recurring amount into FY23, so that those dollars are still there as part of the superintendent's proposed budget to also leverage what the compensation or what the staffing or the implementation would look like.
So, then we should expect a significant bump to the number of family liaisons that become contracted, then?
So, I...
I think that depends, and again, I think it goes back to that idea that we would need to work with the program manager in OPLFE to establish how those resources are allocated and what the needs of the schools are, and balancing that within the entirety of the program to determine.
And I would add the needs of the employee, because we have several employees who have chosen one lane over another depending on their availability for work, what they've built into their own personal family structures, and so, it's also thinking about the need of the employee.
Okay, I'd like to follow up on that, if I can. It doesn't have to be right now, because I'm struggling there a little bit. Oh, that's my time.
Do you want to go back, Dr. Anderson?
Yes, I've just got a couple more.
Okay, super. Ms. Cohen.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate you all bringing this to us. You know, a few things that just kind of strike me, though, first off, in some of the bus driver salaries that we're looking at. I'm worried about the presentation where it says it's like FCPS versus the whole, because when you look specifically back in the compensation study, we're really not comparing apples to apples. I love the WABE. I'm not trying to diss the WABE scale, but we're using systems like Alexandria, Arlington, Falls Church, Manassas Park, Manassas Park have more than like two buses that ride five people. I don't, I'm just saying, like, we got to make sure we're comparing apples to apples. No, I love you, Manassas Park, I'm not trying to, but, so, that, I think, throws us off because that's not exactly the same job that we're asking our bus drivers to do. So, when we do compare, though, Prince William and Loudon, that we love to compare a lot because we're a lot of folks live, you know, the mid for Prince William is $7 more, the max for Prince William is $16 more. I can't believe anybody who lives in Prince William is driving for us, please don't leave. And Loudon is $3 more for mid and $7 more for the max. That's a lot of money. It's a lot of money. And so, I'm really worried that we're kind of painting this bus thing with a real broad brush instead of recognizing that we also have 43% of our bus drivers that are stuck with frozen steps, which I know we can't fix, I know that's systemic, I know we can't afford to go back and fix the steps that got frozen in bad years. So, if we set that aside, then how do we fix this, then, for those people? You can't have worked here for, you know, 10 years and be paid the same thing that somebody who's worked three. I mean, that just doesn't make people want to stay. And these other systems, lucky for them, have not had to freeze steps as much as we have, and I'm sure that's why you see the max so much higher than ours. So, I would just say, I'm very concerned with what I feel like is the narrative, that we need to fix family liaisons, but there's like some different things we can do with bus drivers. I would say it is a dire need to fix both, and we went into, pre-pandemic, we were 80 drivers short. So, this is not new, it's just hugely exacerbated by what we've seen. So, we needed to do this before the pandemic, we have got to do more now that we're in this, but this isn't a new problem, and I, the mid and max, to me, is non-negotiable. Like, we've got to figure out, Megan said it best a few weeks ago, this is one of those areas where I think we can't even be market comparable. We have got to be leaders in the market, or we're not going to get people back.
Would you like a go back, Ms. Cohen?
Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin. Oh, please do.
All right, I just wanted to speak to Ms. Cohen's point. So, yes, all three of these roles play a vital function within our organization, and we value all the contributions of those employees. And certainly, you know, we're in a position where we're trying to ensure that we're consistently applying our methodologies and our approaches as we study the market. Part of what the charge here was, was to look at the WABE group holistically, and that's what we did here. And I wouldn't disagree that, given the significant shortages that we're facing, that perhaps we need to rethink or consider rethinking our approach to how we define the market goal for this particular position. So, that might be establishing a premium to the market to ensure that we maintain, or not maintain, but accelerate our competitiveness within the market.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Ms. McLaughlin.
Great, it's perfect to follow Ms. Cohen, because for years, we had this same dilemma develop when it came to our substitute teacher pay, when we had done the comparator, and it was our Retired Teachers Association that came to the board and said, well, staff might have had good intentions, they took all of WABE, and they didn't disaggregate to the two largest school systems. And so, this is a prime example where, Mr. McDonald, I totally appreciate that we do ask for these comparators, but I think we need Dr. Braybrand to understand that unless the board is being instructed that we have to literally spell out exactly every step that you guys have to take, I would still hope that his administration would still peel back the onion and look further. So, Prince William and Loudon are our largest school divisions that we compete for employees. So, to Ms. Cohen's point, and I've made it for years, tiny, single high school districts are not our comparators, because even if they paid through the moon and back, it wouldn't matter, because they can't hire all of our people away, but Loudon and Prince William can. So, I do want to have more of an analysis, and I would support that, Ms. Cohen, that really come back and, if you could email to the board the numbers you quickly rattled off, because that was really helpful, the mid and the max, but I think that's extremely relevant. I would also say, Mr. McDonald, when we do these comparators, and I'm thinking about family liaisons who are very important to us, but have we done the apples-to-apples comparator of not simply what we pay, but what's the job description and qualifications required? And was that done?
Yes, and that was part of the analysis, and ultimately, some of the requirements for the roles are a little bit different, and I think the family liaison of the three is probably the most diverse in terms of the expectations of individuals occupying the role. So, you know, for instance, in some of the divisions, family liaisons are expected to provide translation services. So, that might be one factor that's variable across the comparator districts, but yes, we did look at that.
Because one of the things that I would expect as a board member for us to help make, you know, smart fiscal and operational decisions, and I would expect of Dr. Braybrand, is that, yes, we start at the macro level for what you're describing, and then when we actually make a fiscal, operational, HR decision, it has to be, you know, more multi-layered. And that includes, yes, we're going to have different categories of family liaisons based on what the needs are, or if you have these skill sets, you're going to get compensated in a different category. We delineate that from anything from administrative assistant to an executive administrative assistant to, I think there's now another layer on that. I think if that's what we need with family liaisons as well, and I'm just being mindful that all of our employees want to make sure that we're having markedly competitive salaries, but we also say we compensate you based on the skills that you possess and the work that you're expected to do. And it looks like I may need a go back. I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to comment to what I said, Mr. McDonald.
I think the one thing I would comment or make a comment on is, you know, certainly, the component of having a differentiated position or set of expectations around what functions the roles would play within our schools is something that we can take back to our partners in OPLFE to see what the programmatic need is across the division, and we would be happy to partner with them to look at perhaps providing or establishing leveled roles if that's what's needed.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. I would also offer that you might want to put that in a next step, Ms. McLaughlin, in the document.
And I would also add that we're here at the beginning of the budget process, bringing the report back for the board so that we can engage in this kind of conversation, so that we can hear from our group, so that the board can hear from those who might be affected, so that we can work toward what that final recommendation might
the report back for the board so that we can engage in this kind of conversation, so that we can hear from our groups, so that the board can hear from those who might be affected, so that we can work toward what that final recommendation might be and what it looks like as part of the overall budget process. And so we know that there is a lot of information in the report, and we know that it was posted this weekend. And so there certainly wasn't enough time for the board to consume all of it. But there are no decisions to be made immediately with this. And so we certainly hope that you will take that opportunity to ingest a lot of the great work that our HR department has done.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Omage.
Yeah, thank you. And happy to follow my colleagues actually on both family liaisons and bus drivers here. Thank you to staff for putting this together. Have we looked at, just building off of what Ms. Cohen, where she left off, in terms of how the situation can be such that bus drivers entering are paid the same or more than bus drivers who've been around for several years? Have we looked at where the disparities exist there and the cost of, whether it's retroactive or not, revising some of that, especially when it comes to steps adjusting to fit whatever increases we're making across the board rather than just for those new employees?
So I, to answer the part of that, I don't have costing available to share today to your question. But certainly, you know, decisions were made prior to today, historical decisions that translated to changes in the pay structure that did create the situation where we have these two different pay plans. Ultimately, I would suggest or recommend that that collaborative work group, when they come together, examine that and take a deeper dive. I think there are some benefits to each of those structures, one of those being that pay is a little more condensed in one of the structures. So folks are earning more over a shorter period of time. Ultimately, the salaries balance out in the end. But, you know, it caters to folks that perhaps want that more condensed salary as opposed to it being spread out over a greater period of time. So there are ups or pluses and minuses to each of those established approaches. I do need to be clear, though, that that old plan is not open to new hires. So we do have approximately 300 individuals that are currently sitting in that old pay plan. Those individuals did have the choice at the time to opt into the new plan, and they did elect to stay in the old plan.
Can you elaborate on what you mean by balances out? And then especially the election piece? Because I guess it concerns me a little bit that from a community standpoint, you know, we continue to hear about the grievance, but if they had the option, yeah, could you kindly please elaborate?
Sure. So both of the, both the old and new plan have a total of 180 workdays. So that is a similarity between the two. And they're spread out over 210 days. We do have non-paid workdays and paid non-workdays within the schedule. And I think it feels like I'm saying the same thing, but it's two distinct things, two distinct approaches. So in our old plan, the drivers have seven non-paid workdays, where in the new plan, there's 24 of those days. And to help offset some of those non-paid workdays, there are paid days that aren't worked. And as part of that process, we see that there are six days available to our new plan and 23 in our old plan. So from an annualized standpoint, the earnings is the same, right? But in our old plan, the drivers are paid over a longer period at a lower rate of pay, whereas in the new plan, drivers are paid over a shorter term but a higher rate of pay. Again, salaries would equate to the same amount. It's just about how the earnings are condensed within the structure of the calendar year. I don't know if I answered your question.
No, that's helpful. I mean, the total sum every year is comparable. But I guess I'm wondering why the community continues to be concerned about this piece, you know? And you mentioned the election, right, that they had the choice. I assume that window is no longer available if people are still complaining about it. Can you please?
So I don't believe folks are able to elect to switch pay plans at this point in time. So the old plan is closed to anyone entering. And I don't believe anyone from the old plan, is that correct, Mr. Drager? Anyone, at this point, no one from the old plan can enter the new plan. So that election window is closed. And I think, sitting here and explaining it to the board, it's confusing. There's a lot of information to digest. And so certainly, our employees likely also have lots of questions and did have lots of questions as we made that transition. Recognizing that that level of complexity continues to weigh on folks, again, it might, it might be prudent for a collaborative work group to study that and see if there is a need to perhaps find some common ground and establish perhaps one pay practice to make it less complex.
No, absolutely. I mean, in the same way, we're looking across regions and using WABE to compare, I think internally even, just making sure there's parity, new and old and experienced and whatnot. Is there something that forces us to stick to that kind of setup where even if we have a pay adjustment for newer employees, regardless of the type of worker, I mean, this is just bus drivers with this one, right, where it doesn't retroactively adjust and just put everyone that's, is that based on just contracts? Or what prevents us from doing that?
I wasn't here at the time that the transition occurred, and so I don't want to speak out of turn. I would imagine that part of why we are where we are is that we did hear from employee groups at that time around the need. And I don't know, Mr. Smith or Ms. Holly Brown, if you have anything to add to that.
And while I was not in the role, the understanding that individuals felt that there was, it was necessary to have some grandfathering for those employees who didn't want to switch to the new pay plan. And so ensuring that we had some options available to them.
Okay, that's helpful. I think maybe looking forward based on how many challenges arose, just from the bus driver's point, you know, it might be the kind of thing where a year from now, we're, you know, switching, be advised, et cetera. But, all right, that was helpful. Thank you. For the family liaisons piece, I know you mentioned possibly looking at, you know, one per school. What, have we considered ratios? I mean, in terms of the needs? I mean, perhaps we want to do it by number of, I don't know, per 250 you have someone or something like that?
So again, I think going back to our recommendation is we do want to look at any way that we can simplify the staffing process. And I don't want to speak out of turn, but our colleagues in OPLFE who are responsible for managing this program, I know that they go to great lengths to try and balance all the needs across the division by schools and sometimes perhaps are limited in terms of the number of available resources. And so that may be one approach to resolving this particular concern. And we would want to continue to partner with them to boil down the process so that there perhaps is a more straightforward formula that's used that can be easily explained and implemented.
Yeah, this one is an equity question for me. You know, if a school is double, triple the population of another, I know, I'm seeing Mason District nodding, you know, Dr. Anderson. So that's certainly a question. And then I know Dr. Anderson started the asking about this, but in terms of the hourly, there was some conversation about kind of giving dignity to the profession by making them contracts beyond just hourly. Is that, is the hope here that that is the transition to moving towards just a full-time contract position as opposed to continuing with the hours? Is that because of the Title I? I know you mentioned the grant. I don't know if you're referring to Title I. Does that require us to buy hours rather than positions? And you may not have all the answers right now, I know.
Yeah, I mean, again, I would defer some of the questions you're asking to our colleagues in OPLFE. But certainly, I think bringing folks on, more folks or giving more folks an opportunity to come on to a contracted hourly role allows for individuals to have a little more, in a way, of a benefit because we are able to structure things a little bit differently with our contracted folks. But we certainly do have some folks that fill the family liaison position that do like the flexibility of having, working in an hourly capacity on a part-time basis because it does provide that flexibility that I spoke to that folks are seeking within the job market.
And I think that when we were having these conversations with previous boards, it was around how unique that position is and those individuals who are currently in those roles. And it was important to keep those individuals who had established those relationships with their communities, who wanted to stay with that particular structure, that we wouldn't want to push them to a different structure, lose them within their communities, and have to start that process over again.
That's helpful. I assume a working group can kind of weigh some of that because I know with benefits, for example, right, access to that might be desired by a subset as well. I'll take a go back, but that's my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Omage. Mr. Frisch.
Thank you. So just to dig a little deeper, and I did not see this in the report, so correct me if I'm wrong. Can you tell us what percentage of our drivers are either currently eligible for full or partial retirement?
We don't have that number today.
My recollection is that a substantial number of them are eligible. So that kind of underscores just how dire the situation is with our bus drivers and how important it is to keep our seasoned bus drivers to keep up with their needs as well. And so I'd like to underscore my support for thinking through what we might do to make sure that those who are, who have been around a while are not feeling slighted based on how new drivers are being paid. To that end, has any thinking gone into that problem in particular? And if so, what are some of the things that are being thought through?
I mean, so we recognize that not only for our bus driver role, but several other operational roles across the organization, we do face the potential for a significant number of folks retiring. And so part of our process or approach has been to engage the program managers around ways to ensure that we're attracting folks from a different demographic, i.e. different age groups, so that we can continue to perhaps widen the array of individuals filling the role. And so, one, it's attracting folks, but two, it's about retaining folks. And, you know, we want to continue to provide for an environment where folks feel engaged and valued and want to continue beyond a particular stage in their life and continue with the organization and provide that service. We, you know, we're looking at both the recruitment and retention aspects and engaging with those program managers around how we accomplish that.
My question was specifically to a certain group of those employees that have been with us for a while. Do you expect that you'll be having some ideas for the board on how to address that specific issue?
Yes, we're looking into that. And we're actually pulling together some staff to look into what a possible retention bonus could look like for employees. That would be a bonus based on your tenure or time with the organization. And so again-
Bonus meaning a one-time payment or an increase in salary?
It could be a premium. It could be a bonus. We haven't finalized or at least parsed out what that could look like. But we are beginning to have some of those conversations.
All right. Going to page 16 in the report, one of the recommendations of possible or helping solutions to this issue with bus drivers is encouraging families to drive their children to school. I can't speak for my colleagues, but in Providence District, we have several elementary schools where kiss and ride is already a considerable problem in the community and creating significant traffic problems. Part of that is exacerbated by the pandemic and people driving their children. So my advocacy would be that we should be encouraging more people to walk and ride their bikes to school as is reasonable and that we should not be going out of our way to discourage people from taking public transportation because it creates strain on staff in the morning especially. Finally, one area that I was thinking through as we were thinking about, particularly bus drivers, but I suppose it could also work with family liaisons, although maybe a different skill set is required there. Have we thought through, you know, we have teachers for tomorrow. Have we thought through at, you know, ways that we could encourage students to consider this as a, either a career or something that they might want to do once they graduate?
So yes, we do have a program geared toward encouraging students to consider careers with FCPS in the operational realm. We do have a program where we call Back to Fairfax, where we invite students to come in and hear from different offices and departments around what some of the operational needs are across the organization. That takes place every spring. And so we do have students that certainly are interested in joining us. I know, you know, for instance, we have, the Office of Transportation Services participates in that event annually. And they bring a bus out, they have students come on, they have a great conversation and explore that possibility. And that's just one example of the many different departments and offices that participate through that pathway.
But we don't necessarily single out the places where we need the most urgent help? Or is that part of the eventual presentation?
Well, I think we have, we have pretty significant needs across the division. And so I wouldn't say that we're not highlighting or singling out the need from that perspective. Certainly, student interest plays some of the, plays into some of the approach there. But we do make the information available and try and engage students over the course of that event to perhaps spark that interest and focus on those greatest areas of need.
All right. Last thing I'll say is I realize that we have a issue across many of the hiring areas at FCPS. But there are certain areas that are of significant need or significantly more need. And I would like us to think creatively about how we can engage the community in finding people who are interested, particularly our student population. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Ms. Seismarheiser.
Thank you. And I want to pick up where Mr. Frisch left off. Because what he asked, I was going to ask about as well. In addition to, do we provide support for people to get that CDL licensure for bus drivers?
So we have, we do have a training program that helps individuals with some of the skills that are associated with obtaining the CDL.
Great. I appreciate that. And how much, when you have this Back to Fairfax program, how much outreach do you do to schools? How much, and this may be a question for Dr. Ivy, I'm not really sure exactly who, but how much targeted outreach do we do to schools in terms of encouraging principals, teachers, case managers to identify students who might be particularly interested and encourage them to go? I'm just going to share, you know, my personal story. My son is in a social skills group with young adults, middle kids, special ed, standard diploma, not a single one is employed. We have a huge population of people who are unemployed. We need to recruit. We need to be more flexible in our, our training, in our hiring, in our mentoring to include the live norms of people with disabilities. We have a huge population of people looking or needing jobs and a huge need. We have to expand our processes, procedures, and trainings to include them. I don't know what's being done. Maybe Dr. Boyd has something to say about that, but there's such a mismatch. I keep hearing this. So I'd welcome any comments on this. First, the recruitment targeted as well as what we're doing around our training and our retention and mentoring to be inclusive.
Thank you for that. I'm not aware of targeted intentional recruitment. I think it could be happening in some locations. So I appreciate the comment and suggestion.
And just in terms of the, specific to the Back to Fairfax event, you know, we do, our outreach is focused around two segments of population. One is to our FCPS grads. And so we do send out email notifications. We work to gain access to that information and ensure that- ensure that those graduates are aware of the event. And we're also working directly with our schools. And I'm hearing, based upon the feedback, that there's a need to continue to try and improve the level, the frequency, the, basically to augment that communication perhaps even further, to ensure that we're maximizing our outreach to our existing student population. But we do do that outreach and try and work with our principals, our DSSs, our counselors, in getting that word out to our students.
If I may make a suggestion of coordinating with our Career and Transition Services and our ETRs, who are helping, provide transition supports for some of our students who may or may not be going to college, that might be a way to target students who often end up unemployed.
Thank you. I think that's something that we can further discuss with Dr. Boyd and the Department of Special Services and how we can expand.
And I'll just make a plug, that often the middle kids, as I've called them many, many times, get missed even in the ETR services. You know, the group of kids who are standard diploma, CAT A, teen-taught, who may or may not be going to colleges, but may fall out of our transition support services is a really great pool of people who I think would be wonderful to consider for many of our programs. So I'm just putting that out there. I agree very much with many of the things that are said. I think we do need to look at our larger WABE school systems when we're looking at comparisons. And I'm just going to, you know, from my economics background way back then, this is a supply and demand that's happening across the country, right? So while it is, of course, important to be within, you know, a competitive salary range to our WABE jurisdictions, we also have to recognize that in a world where our demand is outstripping our supply, right, in the way health and wages are $15 an hour, we have to consider that in making recommendations around what our salary scales and should be. So I think we want to have good drivers and we're competing to get some systems, the bigger systems that... With our family liaisons, I very much agree with some of the comments made by Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Cohen. I think what we're looking at is kind of a professionalizing of this career, you know, rather than hourly workers, tracks, job requirements, because as our population becomes more diverse... Oh, my time up, I'm sorry. I will take a go back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Ms. Pekarsky.
Okey-dokey. Okay, thank you. Thank you for bringing all this information to us. It was a long report. We tried to pick through it. So I think, you know, in the report, the average age of our drivers was 53.5 years. And there was also another statistic that over 70% of our drivers are over 50. That's a pretty critical and very scary statistic when we are looking at these other salary comparisons to the big, especially if we look, you know, at the other larger districts where we know people are most likely to be picked off and incentivized to go to. And just sitting here, you know, thinking to myself, if I were a driver, why would I stay in Fairfax County at that point? I'm very worried about that retention piece of this and, you know, ensuring that we compare it to the systems that are really, you know, most likely to bring in our drivers. So I think, you know, I think there needs to be some more, some more work done around that, the high end and that retention piece. And I don't know what that looks like, but I just, I feel like we need to have some different options brought to us. And there was also some information in there about adjusting possible bell schedules as one of the options. Could you talk a little bit about what that is?
I think that recommendation is really to support this idea that we need to look at the role and the structures across the division that impact our ability to perhaps ensure that we're maximizing the services of folks without creating a greater need than we actually do need. I don't know if that was clear. So essentially limiting the need with the understanding that we have a nationwide shortage. So how do we best use the resources that are available to us and perhaps make adjustments where we can to not create a need for a greater number of individuals to fill a role?
Yeah, and I'm totally on board with that. And, you know, the conversation also about fixing those middle school start times, I don't know if that, you know, would exacerbate the problem or would possibly be part of the solution in some way, maybe not. But I am interested in getting more information about efficiencies in that way. I think we need to do that. You know, the formation of a collaborative working group, which you put, I think makes sense. I also think it would make sense to have kind of an end date to that, to know that it's not just something that's going to go on in perpetuity and will be bringing forth some, you know, some solutions because, you know, imminently, we could have, we have issues already with how many, you know, positions we have unfilled, but that could get much worse before it gets better. And I know the recommendation of creating the subpool after the 30 days of separation, I know that's something our associations have brought to us repeatedly. And, you know, I think that is definitely something we should do. I mean, I don't know what we need to do to get that going, but I know they have expressed that as a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pekarsky. Ms. Tolan.
Just very quickly, the working group that you were mentioning as a possibility, is that something you're looking at in the very short term, that we would be able to fit recommendations into this budget cycle?
I would like to, yes, turn it around pretty quickly in terms of implementation. And I think there are a variety of needs across these three very distinct positions that can be looked at, but certainly if the work group was able to coalesce around some key points, we could share those back and be available for consideration. I know our time horizon is fairly short when we think about when the budget does need to be approved, but there might be a possibility. I can't guarantee...
Yeah, I mean, it would be great if we could fit in, given that we've got the placeholder, you know, for this topic, you know. And then we can also take into consideration the raises that we are proposing in the budget already for all employees into this entire, you know, look at the numbers. So, other than that, I don't have any additional points to bring up that haven't already been brought up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. I do have a couple of go-backs, a number of them, but before I do that, I want to just raise a couple of things. To get a CDL license in the state of Virginia, you have to be 18 years old. It takes about a year, at least, to be prepared for that. It seems to me that what we should be doing is actually implementing as part of our career and technical education, a CDL licensure. Because what we do know is that we have a number of kids who graduate from high school and are looking for important jobs and careers but don't necessarily see the opportunities. So I would like us to take a look at that potential. Additionally, I do want to raise the issue about the retention bonus. Here's my concern about retention bonuses. I think that they are welcomed at the time that they are granted, but they do not contribute to the long-term earnings of an individual in their retirement. And we need to look at this as being a covenant between our employees and one that actually respects the invaluable role that they play in our organization. And so I would like to have a cost-benefit analysis of what it would actually cost to give, rather than a retention bonus, an increase in the higher-end salaries. Lastly, when we talk about the parent liaisons, which we've been, I was partnering with Sandy Evans back in 2017 on the family liaison, so I recognize how important it is. I think we have to look at two things. One is the pipeline and how we actually work with students today to bring them into these roles. And so perhaps we need to also look at career opportunity, training opportunities in our schools. The second is, we talk about the benefit of being able to take advantage of the FCERS retirement program, whereas neighboring jurisdictions use the VRS. It was my understanding that the FCERS was a supplemental program and that they could actually contribute to both the FCERS and the VRS, or is it just limited to the FCERS?
Just the FCERS program.
So why are we not looking at providing them a similar opportunity that our teachers and other educators have to be able to have that supplemental retirement?
So the surrounding jurisdictions have taken that action. They took it a very long time ago, probably 50 years ago or so, and there is a distinction between what's termed teachers and administrators, et cetera, that are currently in VRS, and then some of the support employees. And so we could take that step, but we would be withdrawing from the county retirement program in order to do that. So it's not, it's an either-or sort of step. There are differences in the costing currently, and there are some other implications, but we can certainly look at doing that going forward.
Would it be possible for you to actually provide us a short white paper on the benefits and challenges of doing something like that? Because I will tell you, I don't quite understand it, and so it would be helpful to better understand what you're suggesting here.
Sure, you can do that.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And that is all I have. I'm going to go back to our go-backs. I have Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. Just very quickly, I do want to lend support to the two ideas that you've just shared regarding growing our own. This is an approach that we're taking and for other employee groups, only because the workers are not there. So if there's a pipeline that could be established in our schools for drivers and for family liaisons, I would love to also lend support to that idea. Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. I also had a question regarding the retention bonus for veteran drivers. How are we categorizing veteran?
We haven't gotten that far yet, so we've only started having those discussions, and so we can certainly bring something back to the board about what that structure would look like. We want to have an opportunity to engage with our employee groups and engage with those who might be impacted, specifically our bus drivers, so that we can get a better sense of what their recommendations might be as well.
Okay, I think that would be important, particularly to address some of the issues that Ms. Cohen and others have articulated, because we have that group of folks who have missed some of those steps. Are you considering this to be one-time? It's a one-time bonus? Or is it something that you would do as a stipend more frequently?
So we're having discussions about it being a one-time bonus at this point, and I know that as part of the overall study, we did bring forward some recommendations about possible changes or premium scale adjustments, and so we'll certainly have those discussions as well.
And my last question, going back to family liaisons, you started talking about it very quickly with Ms. Omeish, the recommendation to simplify the staffing practices. I'm unclear in terms of what that means.
I think essentially what we're getting at is to establish some sort of a system-wide formula that can be applied across the board to allocating those roles to our schools based upon their varying needs.
Okay, this will come as no surprise to anyone if I continue to say that whatever that formula is, we really should hone in on the needs of our schools. I'm not a fan of putting braces on everybody, so we need to really identify some metrics that really speak to the spirit of the parent liaison position and to the challenges that many of our schools have in terms of English language learners, population, FRM. Those really tend to be the group that parent liaisons are trying to bring into the schools, rather their parents, to bring into the schools. So I would like for whatever metrics you determine to rely heavily on those populations, which present significant challenges to our schools, rather than something that is more open-ended and arbitrary. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Cohen?
Yeah, I just, following up a little bit too on what Elaine just said, that I really do feel urgently that this needs to happen for next year. So however, we need to scramble to put that together in the middle of scrambling for a lot of things right now. You know, my big worry is if we, again, don't get ahead of this, we know that other systems are just going to keep advancing ahead of us. So if we give 4% this year, but you're making $30,000 here, and, but Prince William, you're making 35, and they give 5%, and then, I mean, we just keep getting outpaced. And so I remember Megan referencing a few years ago when this happened with teacher salaries, where we just kept getting outpaced. And so all of a sudden, we found ourselves in a quick period of time, pretty far away from where we had been. And I just fear, looking at this, that makes me very concerned that that's the case. The 30-day retirement thing, I agree with Stella, we did it for teachers to try to infuse some life. I'm fine with that. I did wonder if you could help me, though. I noticed a reference to Driver 1 and Driver 2, and I just wondered if you could help me figure out what's what there. How does that work?
Sorry, Ms. Cohen, you're asking what the difference between the roles are? Is that what your question is?
Yeah, I just noticed, like, we had some issue about that with staff aides, I mean, EAAs this year, and the distinction was really tough to kind of get at. So it does make a big difference, it seems like, in pay as you go, especially up the scale. So if you could help educate us on that.
I think that we have Mr. Plattenberg or Ms. Furby on, and perhaps they might be able to provide some delineation between the Driver 1 and Driver 2.
Sure. Good afternoon, this is Francine. So Driver 1, we hire new drivers on the Driver 1 pay scale. Once they've complete a successful year, then they're placed on the Driver 2, in the Driver 2 lane.
Okay, so everybody should be a Driver 2 then, after year 2?
Yes, that is correct.
Perfect, that helps. Another, just to, I, like, the wheels are turning over here, of course, as we start talking about CE. You know, we're wondering about the idea of using ACE as a conduit for some CDL licensure, especially if we could do a combo with English proficiency, because we hear that that's some of the hang-up that's happening with some of our drivers. So maybe there's a great 1-2 immersion combo class there that we could use. The other last thing, just Mr. Frisch, with safe routes, I just hope that we're going to consider when we're talking about walkers and riders...
Ms. Cohen.
Oh, sorry.
And put your comments in the next steps. Ms. McLaughlin.
I wanted to go back because I absolutely support what Ms. Pekarsky brought up, that just like we've done with teachers, if we can go ahead and bring people back 30 days after, then let's do that. Do we anticipate how many employees that might bring or could yield? Like, how many qualify even?
Well, essentially, that would be tied to the number of folks that retire in a given year. I think it's hard to predict at this point.
No, that's what I was hoping, though, is what's our year-over-year that we typically retire out?
We currently have 19 that we could bring back.
Every little bit helps. So, and the other thing that I just, you know, again, want to be mindful about, anytime we have a conversation, having data and context. So to what Ms. Cohen was saying, you know, we have the local composite index that I won't go into, that affects sometimes how we can utilize matching funds from the state, give raises that people were seeing happen to Loudon and Prince William, because they were actually getting larger chunks of money from state coffers in Fairfax County. Because of its local composite index, we were getting a much smaller portion. So we weren't getting the match that the state was providing, which means our local taxpayers were having to make a big delta in order to provide comparable raises to those surrounding jurisdictions. That affects all of our employees. That affects all of our employees, not just the ones we're talking about here today. So I, I do want to say again that when we have these recommendations coming from the superintendent and his team, it's going to be really important that for our board and for the public and for all of our employees understand that we can't look at these things just in a vacuum, because any one of our employee groups are going to come to us and say, well, we're getting outpaced, you know, for our teachers, and so now what are you going to do? Like, we're, we need a holistic conversation in this time that we're in right now, which is, it's a, it's a tight job market all, all the way around.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Omeche?
Yeah, thank you. I did want to point out, I know that there was some conversation about engaging students, younger people, et cetera. I did want to thank you all for, for the takeaway, actually, from our previous work session on advertising to college students for substituting and whatnot. I did notice that, and I think it's worth mentioning. Since a lot of this is kind of being channeled, or suggested to be channeled through working groups, I wanted to spend just a little bit of time understanding a little bit of how you're envisioning that, who, you know, potentially would be a part. I certainly want to make sure some of those folks who have had the most significant grievances are represented, but if you could speak to that, please.
Yeah, so we're anticipating bringing together employees, management, and other stakeholders that might be closely associated with the roles that are played by each of these positions across the organization. I think as an introduction, we would want to provide some of the same information around what the current landscape looks like, both nationally and here locally, and using the information found in this, this report as the backdrop for leveling that, that playing field in terms of, of knowledge and understanding, and then really drilling into what our current recruitment practices and retention practices are, and building from there. Understanding, quite often, our employees are, have really creative solutions to some of the challenges that we face, and understand some of the dynamics that play out within the course of their role. So being able to uncover and dig and, and work together to brainstorm and, and solution is, is going to be where we would like to head with those work groups. We want to make sure that we're not creating red tape or, or, or points where people fall out of the process, going from applicant to employee, and then also focusing on what we can do to keep folks in place once we got them on board.
I appreciate that, and, you know, I think it would be helpful, you mentioned more creative solutions, it's, it's interesting that we're having this conversation right after the calendar, I'll let that sit, but, you know, in terms of making sure that folks across, all across the vertical, you know, hierarchy are represented in conversations around that, and then even potentially people who left. I don't know if we would, you know, we have exit surveys, what they reflect, but maybe considering asking some of those folks what's happened, or, you know, what their input would be. The other thing, since this is a broader budget conversation, I really wanted to bring up the whole frozen steps thing. I know that we can't do that in every way that's being asked of us, but even just for retirement, can somebody tell me a little bit about whether there's been history in, in exploring this or not? What I mean by that, I see some puzzled faces, is when someone is retiring and we have frozen their steps over time, just in terms of what they've earned, can we give them the retirement amount that reflects the years of experience? And is that something, you know, I'm sure it's, it's a budget item if we were to do that, but can you speak a little bit to what's prevented that from happening?
So that's a complicated question. In short, no, we can't. We participate in the Virginia retirement system, and they have a very structured, formulaic approach to the consideration of the contributions that are made on behalf of the employee and the consideration of the contributions that the employee makes, and it is all based on their wages, and so it does not include bonuses or something like that, so there would be no opportunity to do recovery. E R O C is patterned off of V R S, and so while it's our retirement system that's considered as supplemental to that, we have a little bit more flexibility, but the reality is it's not currently structured that way. F C E R S is the county system that supports these employees that we're talking about today, and those same restrictions apply to that.
Would it be possible to have something where, maybe in that final year of a retiree's work, that it's reflected so that then in the retirement calculation, as you're pointing out, it is?
So retirement formulas include how much someone makes over a period of time, and usually it's a three- or a five-year average of their highest earning wages for the year, and they have to be wages, right? And so that's part of the formula between their age, their years of service, and their earnings.
No, that's helpful. I, I think it continues to be just one of those points of, you know, setting expectations for employees when they join us, and what they're, you know, looking at in the future, and then what they retire with, a, a point of pain, but I know that's my time, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Omeche.
And if, if I could share that, so when we employ, hire employees, at no time do we have any guarantees in terms of the number of steps that you might make throughout your career, because we know that based on whatever market conditions might be, or whatever decisions that the board maybe, you know, may have to make based on those market conditions, that we don't make those guarantees to individuals. And so I just want to be very clear with that, that for the public, that they're not thinking that if you're hired in Fairfax County based on the scale at that time, that you are somehow promised a particular step when you leave after so many years, because those progressions can change from one year to the next.
With that, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to pivot towards a broader discussion of the superintendent's proposed budget, and reminding everybody that we will have about a half an hour today to do that if possible, and then we will have a full work session on February 8th, which will allow us to take into account the conversations or the, what we hear next, at next Monday's public hearing. I am going to allow Ms., Dr. Anderson to speak first, I know she's up against a budget time, or a timeframe.
Thank you, I appreciate it, because I do have to get going. I just want to follow up on the conversation that I had last Thursday, when we were talking about the formula for the assistive principal enhancement. I know I mentioned that to Dr. Braybrand, and that we would have more discussions now, so I'd love to hear where you guys have landed. Some of the documents here have spoken to how that will be 20%, and I have to find that page, 20% F R M plus some other measures that I'm not sure that I fully understand, so I'd like to have that explained first, and then maybe push on with my advocacy.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Matthew Norton to come up to give me an assist if I need it, but essentially, the enrollment is, the, the formula uses enrollment F R M of those that are greater than 20% to derive the number of A Ps. So Matthew, you can do that in a much more detailed manner if you.
Thank you. Don't mind coming up and explaining.
Yes, good afternoon. So the staffing formula for A Ps that's in the proposed budget, the starting point is at 20% as to when a school would see a bump in its enrollment number, but 20% is not across the board for all schools, so basically what we did was, we took the enrollment, we multiplied it by half of the F R M percentage, once it's 20% or higher, and then we used that number to scale the school. So take, for instance, a school that is 500 students, and if there was such a school that had 100% F R M.
Kind of.
We would, we would basically gross that 500 up by 150%, so, so half of the 100%, 50%. So we would consider that school like a 750-student school. If the school was only 20% F R M, we would only gross their number up by 10%, and so they would be considered like a 550-kid school. So you can see that as the F R M percentage goes up, the amount of support that we would provide towards providing the, the additional A P would be greater.
Okay, I appreciate that, because I was very concerned that most of my schools are pretty much 60% and higher, with some as, you know, 99%, as you know, with Bailey's and Glenn Forest looking at 85, 87%. So I'm glad to hear that. Here's my other question, in previous conversations with you, Ms. Burden, I did not get the sense that there was a formula for administrators in the first place. Is there one that I should know about, which will give me some sense of what the staffing increases would be based on this formula? What is the assistive principal formula as it stands currently?
Yeah, so prior to the FY '23 proposed budget, the, the elementary formula was, you received a second A P when your student enrollment exceeded 950, or when you exceeded 76 select staff positions. And so there was, there was two ways that you could get to that second A P. That did cause a little bit of confusion with some of our schools, particularly because of the staff component, it was not every single staff member in the building. And so when we transitioned to what we were recommending in the superintendent's proposed budget, we have gone down to just, you know, one piece, but we're ensuring that that piece is impacted by F R M, because that's one of the largest drivers for how much staff ends up in a school to begin with. And so we've sort of, kind of rolled that in to just one formula.
So what, what is the current formula? Which piece have you retained?
So, so the current formula of either when you reach 950 or 76 staff members, the new formula is take your enrollment, multiply by that half of that F R M, and then the two scales, we, we've actually set it up so that you can have one, two, or three A Ps in an elementary, and the first one is at 750, that was when you would get your second A P, and then at 1100 is when you would get your third A P.
Would we be able to just get a, I'm sorry, okay, would we be able to get a, a chart that shows how the application of this formula is impacting the provision of a second A P? Because I'm struggling here a little bit, I understand, but I'd like to see the impact on paper.
Yeah, definitely. There is no single school that is negatively impacted by the formula.
Right.
So every elementary school either retains the, the A P staffing that they have, or it saves a position, or it adds a position. So there's, there's no negatively impacted schools by switching to the new formula.
Sure, but I also, I also want to be true to the spirit with which I brought this forward, which is the turnover in our Title I schools, where you have some issues that may not show up in other sites. It's really been significant in Mason District, where it's been principals, it's been assistive principals, because the workload has been so significant. It's not just instructing kids, but it's getting kids ready to be instructed, and that, that's hard work, and sometimes it's a lot to navigate for administrators, and so I want to be sure that this is really addressing that, because that's been one of the points I've really stressed with the superintendent over the past couple of years, and I'm glad to see it be reflected in this budget, but I just want to make sure it's meeting the mark. Thank you. Let's see, just 42 more seconds, what else can I get in there? Better prioritize here. Oh, the other question that I had was regarding the flexible office positions for middle schools, okay, he's disappeared, so it's you. For middle schools, I, I really want it for some consideration for our elementary schools that are as large or larger than middle schools. I didn't see that there, because I know the burden and the office staff can be significant. So who can speak to that?
Thank you for raising that, we, I could answer that.
Oh.
Thank you for raising that, we can certainly take that information, and we need to meet and discuss it, and then get back to you.
Okay.
Can I just raise one other point with the earlier comment you made about schools that have enrollment that sometimes fluctuates, so that therefore they might not qualify for the additional A P? Oftentimes, the region offices will work with principals and bring to finance and H R a request for an exception, where we can show that the enrollment is fluctuating, and they can look at it further. So sometimes additional staff are appointed that way as well.
Thank you, but also, one more thing, you just reminded me of another piece to consider as we're talking about F R M, E L L is also another measure that tends to provide some additional burden onto a school. Weta testing, the parent meetings on that Weta testing, your A P, depending on your school population, could be doing just that every day and all day, and not available for other tasks.
Absolutely, and sometimes we also monitor those enrollments, and we work closely with Rich Polio and his office, and sometimes additional staff are requested for that as well, and those meetings occur throughout the school year.
Could that be part of this formula for consideration for E L L population, and not just E L L population, but those who are receiving active services, one through five, levels one through five, because again, the burden is there for the paperwork, the meetings, the testing, et cetera?
For A Ps?
Yeah.
I mean, we can, we can calculate that and see what it would look like. Also, in page, on page 50, in the budget facts that we distributed last week, is a listing of all of the schools and the A P allocations, the additional A P allocations that they got, that might help you.
Thank you, but this is not with the new proposed formula? It is with the new proposed formula. Okay, so I'll take a look at that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I have Ms. Cohen, followed by Ms. Marin, but before I do that, Ms. Pekarsky, I know you're going to leave, you can, okay, thank you. Ms. Cohen?
Thank you, I'm glad to follow that. I was just going to say that I thought initially when we had the number of staff people, the idea was to capture exactly that, the special programs that are like I D and enhanced OT and things where you have these programs embedded that does make it a different administrative burden. And so I guess that would be my question, with the new formula, did any schools lose an additional A P? Okay, awesome. And so I would just second what Dr. Anderson said, if we can just make sure that, and I know that happens with the RAS too, that communication, but just making sure those special programs that we don't view, it's not one-size-fits-all. Another thing I was just going to ask, and I guess it, I'll piggyback on what I ended with last time, I think as we look at transportation woes that we have, I know that we lost that money for safe routes to school, and that, that really position has changed, we don't necessarily need to re-up that person, but I do think we need to embed somebody who will help schools specifically be able to go out, and maybe it's embedded, I guess, in facilities of helping find and identify safe routes to school that are biking and walking, because we're losing, I understand, the county coordinator, and that was more of an educational kind of position, but this, like, we've got to have something functional, because Carl's right, not only is it really jamming up kiss and ride, I mean, man, the environmental impact that we are having by discouraging people, I never thought we'd be in this position of discouraging people from using public transportation, it's certainly not where we want to be, so I'd love to put a pitch in for that. My other one that I've been kind of having some conversation with folks about is ensuring that our I As are making what we would consider cost of living, which I know is a fungible figure, I'm not going to put an exact number on it, but, but I know we are off from that, and so working together on, on what does that look like? It, it looks like it is somewhere close to $40,000 in this county. We're off from that, so even if we were in a multi-year out plan like we were to increase their starting salaries that the previous board started, I'd really, really, really like to see us considering that. We got to get, as the cost of living just skyrockets, there's no way with however big of a raise we can give, a percent, an M S A, that we're going to catch them up to living wage. But thank you, this is awesome. I mean, I really just want to say again, and I didn't get to as much Thursday night, and I just appreciate it, this really exciting budget that I think is going to help a lot of people, so thank you.
So Ms. Cohen, if I can just summarize, you would like to have a cost estimate of what it would cost to, to do an enhancement for our instructional assistance, similar to what we've done with our transportation folks and other, to actually bring them up to a higher percentage and what the recommendation would be. Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Ms. Pekarsky?
Can I?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, can I just ask to make sure that's in our next steps? Okay.
We don't typically have next steps for budget, but our, we have a list of questions and our budget folks are doing that. Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that, okay.
Yeah, since we have the online budget question submission process now, when they've asked whether it should be next steps, I said just make it next steps, and we'll take care of it that way, instead of having to take all of them and enter them into the system for you all, and we wouldn't have known priority, so we said just continue as next steps.
Thank you. Ms. Pekarsky?
Yeah, thank you. Just kind of quickly, I, I
Yeah, thank you. Just kind of quickly, I, I just to, to clarify some of the things that you've put on here and in, in particular, the ESOL staffing, the advanced academics and the language and literacy placeholders. Can you just talk a little bit about what that is? Jog our memory. And, you know, it's been a long time since we had these conversations. So what do these entail?
Well, I can get us, I can try to get us started with that. So I think the first thing that you asked about was perhaps literacy. So you know, of course, that we're really involved in the development of a K-12 Equitable Access to Literacy Plan, starting our work this year at the elementary level and scaling that up into the secondary level. So the budget has for supporting that work, additional staff members, both at the elementary level and at the middle school level, to support that work. So there would be three literacy resource teachers at the elementary level and one middle school intervention teacher, and then four specific positions to work to support the unique needs of supporting schools for our English language learners. So that money is entirely really devoted to those centralized positions that will be working in the schools to provide professional development and coaching to implement the new literacy strategies. So that was the first one. The second one, I think you asked about the AAP positions.
Yes.
And that largely is a continuation of implementing the recommendations that we received as part of the external AAP study. So there's funding in here for positions to enhance our advanced academic resource teachers at our elementary schools to continue that implementation of getting all of our elementary schools to a 1.0 full-time advanced academic resource teacher, as well as staffing for part-time, halftime resource teachers at the middle school level, and then a continuation of the funding to support young scholars, which is delivered to schools on a per pupil basis, depending on the number of students that they have in their school. And was there a third one that you asked about?
It was ESOL staffing.
So the ESOL staffing is adding 50 additional positions as part of a multi-year initiative to try to come into alignment with the state SOQ recommendations for best practices in terms of caseload. So we did, in this current year's budget, or the FY22 budget, 50 positions. These are 50 additional positions for FY23, and that would bring us into alignment about three quarters of the way, well, probably about halfway in alignment with those staffing standards. So there's still quite a ways to go, but again, it's a continuation of a multi-year strategy to try to get in alignment with those caseload required, well, recommendations from VDOE.
And what schools or how are you making those decisions?
So that's based on the student enrollment at each school. So depending on how many English language learners there are at a particular school, staffing is allocated to schools based on that caseload. And it's not just the overall number of students, it's how many students you have at Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, Level 4.
Okay. And I guess one of the other things, you know, I think this came up the other night, is with the sped lead teacher and what will that look like in different schools, considering there are different caseloads. So just a little bit of the, the thinking behind that one per school approach would be helpful.
So I think Dr. Boyd is online. If she is, I'm going to give her the first opportunity to respond. If not, I'd be happy to, to help answer that.
Yes. Yes, I'm here. And good afternoon. Thank you so much, Dr. Presidio. The idea is that there would be one special education lead at each elementary school. That person is really going to be vital in providing ongoing and continuous support, not only for our novice teachers, but also our experienced teachers and professional development, working with our teachers, developing IEPs to make sure we have measurable goals that are connected to the PLOT, working with our teachers, and also removing some of that administrative responsibility for administrators so that they can really focus on supporting instruction. Those special ed leads can serve as the special ed designee at department meetings, excuse me, at IEP meetings. So their function would really be very similar to that of their secondary schools, but there would be the idea of one per school as opposed to a partial position based on schools enrollment.
So Dr. Boyd, I think what Ms. Pukarski and a few other board members are asking is if a school had a very large population or several programs at the school, would we consider perhaps adding an additional lead special ed person? And could we just take a look at that and?
We would, we would welcome looking at, we would certainly welcome looking at that as an additional resource for schools that have, you know, multiple special programs that require extra support and expertise, again, that coaching and feedback for our staff. So we are certainly happy to look at that and follow up at a subsequent, in preparation for a subsequent meeting.
If I could though, and we definitely can do that, but what's contemplated in this budget is to provide that staffing level consistently for each school to have a full time. There's not additional funding contemplated in this budget to go beyond that 1.0 at any schools that might have larger caseloads.
Yes, but I mean, I'm still stuck on that. If you've got a huge caseload in one school and another one doesn't, that, there's inequity there. So, you know, maybe one school isn't a full, maybe it's a half. I, I, I just need a little bit.
So that, that's, if the board provided that direction that you would want us to look at tiered staffing, that would be something that we could do, as Dr. Boyd was mentioning. But right now, as presented, this budget is recommending a full-time staff member at each school for consistency. But definitely, that could be something at the board's direction that we could look at a tiered staffing approach.
Yeah, no, I, for one, you know, that's why I bring it up again. I know Laura Jane brought it up. Yes, I think so. I think, you know, if we're talking about being equitable, then that makes sense. And I don't know what that would look like. I don't know the needs in every single school, but I would like to understand that just in a little bit more detail. And that is all I have for today. Thank you.
Ms. Pukarski, we can do that. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. So, okay, Ms. Seismarheiser, great. Thank you.
Sorry, I thought there was somebody else ahead of me, so I hadn't put my placard up yet. A couple of things. I actually want to first pick up on one where Ms. Pukarski left off about the Special Education Department chairs. And I know this was some question about different sized schools and why do we have one per, is, is the thought here that this would be the minimum that every school needs and then we would look at a tiered approach later? Or I guess I'd like to dig more into what's the thinking of one per?
So, I'm sorry, just to answer that, it, it probably would be helpful to frame the question in a budget question for staff to be able to provide a written response. But right now, what I would say is, our original thinking around this was to get to that, in this year's budget, to get to that minimal baseline level of 1.0 in every school. In future years' budgets, we could consider going above and beyond that, depending on the number of students in a school that might create additional need in a particular school. But if the board wants us to look at a tiered model this year, we'd be happy to do that and respond to that in a budget question.
I guess the other question is, or maybe a point I'm going to make is, it'd be interesting to dig more into this, and I'll put a budget question in if Ms. Pukarski isn't already. But I know that there's some schools that might have a smaller population of students, but perhaps might have a greater special education need. In that, what I'm trying to say, special education students aren't neatly related to the number of students in a school. Right? So you may, in fact, some of the smaller schools that may have more space may actually have more special education programs or room to grow more special education programs because of just facilities availability. So I, you know, I very much, I think, agree on, we need to get this position. I think a lot of people are supportive of this position, but I just think we need to have a little more nuance in the conversation in terms of the need per school. And it seems to me perhaps one per school is a base need, but I'd need more information on that. But I just want to be careful not to tie too much population and special education population. It's not a neat one per one. Dr. Presidio, I think, I don't know if I misunderstood you or not, but when, I might dig a little bit more into the Young Scholars Program. I think you said that, you know, the ARTs are sort of responsible for growing this program. Is that correct? Young Scholars?
Yes, that's correct.
And it depends on the number of Level 1, Level 2, Level, I guess, Level 3 and 4, or 2, 3, and 4 identified at a school?
No, it's the number, it's just the number of students who are in the Young Scholars Program, not dependent on the level of service.
So is there a central sort of coordinating position or somebody centrally involved in sort of really growing that program?
Yes. Good afternoon. As part of last year's budget, we put in a specialist position on the Advanced Academic Program Team, who has been working with schools this year. They've done a variety of things, giving guidance on how to use that per pupil expenditure that you all put in place last year, providing all sorts of supports and professional development on the model, raising awareness and trying to elevate the, the program, putting together asynchronous modules for PD. So yes, we, we did put that resource in last year.
Great. And then one last question, I think, for Dr. Boyd. There was a position I saw in the budget that, and I mentioned this briefly in our meeting last week. It's a behavior interventionist for sort of, but it doesn't seem to be tied specifically to our bits. It's one position to deal with behavior issues on an, almost like an equity level. But if someone could explain to me a little more what this position is, what's the thought behind it, what their, the plan is, it would be helpful to me to better understand what they're going to be doing and how they relate to our existing behavior intervention folks.
So thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. I'll double check, but I believe that that might be the position that's going to be working in conjunction with the Discipline and Equity Office as well as the Hearing Office to look at discipline, to ensure that we are addressing and being proactive around the, all of the equity training and trying to decrease the disproportionality and discipline that we're seeing in our, in our data. So I'll confirm that information, but I believe that that, that position is going to be working across a couple of offices there.
Okay. And maybe I'll put in a budget question might be easier, but I am curious about the behavioral, the description we talked about as a behavioral interventionist. I'm kind of curious what that in itself means, because to me, right, that reads as somebody who's helping to proactively address behavioral issues within our school. So I'll, I'll put that as a budget question to get a little more of a detailed answer to that, but I just want to dig more into that. I do think there is space for some more support on the behavioral side, especially with what we're hearing. And the last thing, this isn't really for this year's budget, but I do think we need to have some conversations on long-term COVID learning remediation and social emotional needs and who's going to kind of own that going forward outside of our ESTRO programs. But I'll stop here. Look at that.
Ms. McLaughlin followed by Ms. Keys-Gamaro.
So I, I want to quickly capture something that I had raised at last Thursday's board meeting and, you know, is now, you know, Ms. Pukarski, you brought up, and I appreciate what Ms. Seismarheiser said. It's about the sped lead. Without question, we should be staffing based on what are the typical caseloads that we see per school. And, and respectfully, Dr. Presidio, the board's job is oversight, it's not operational management decisions. And so I'm a little concerned why Dr. Braybrand is bringing to us a proposal that isn't more nuanced. I mean, we really need to be looking at what is the, the population within each of these 200 schools? And how do we deploy then the support and resources? And I'll bring an example again. I have, in, in my Woodson Pyramid alone, some elementary schools that are well over 800 kids and others that have 300 kids. I don't want to see both elementary schools getting one sped lead when it turns out that the school with over 800 might have three times the population and the need there. So I, I would ask my colleagues that rather than the 12 of us who are part-time elected officials are being required to now come up with a proposal that in our next step, we simply just ask Dr. Braybrand and his team to revisit what I think is a really important investment. I'm fully behind the sped lead approach, but I don't want me or any other board member who, this is not our operational expertise, to come up with the solution. And I hate to put a too fine a point on it, but we, we, we got some news on a lawsuit that we know, you know, we, we've had to come up and create some operational choices. And I don't, I don't really feel like the board, again, being put in a position that we're supposed to solve things. And it's not good for the system. So I will also say that, you know, in terms of the rest of the budget, I, I really do want to also put a fine point on where do we stand on our elementary school principal pay parity?
That is totally completed and not in question.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because it kept being pulled off year after year. So now we're talking about assistant principals being, yeah, well, no, not just that, but you were, yes. So I, I was listening to some of the questions that other board members asked, but just again, summarizing, what is it that you're wanting us to approve for this coming budget?
For assistant principals, it's looking at a formula that would allow us to place assistant principals at schools based on FRM and not based on numbers, numbers of students overall, nor based on number of staff members.
Because I, I mean, I was listening to how you're going to portion it based on the 1.5, but I guess I'm trying to understand, does that mean some schools could potentially lose? Or is it only adding?
So no, no schools will lose in this approach. And I believe, Ms. Burden, the page in the budget, page 50?
Budget facts document.
There's a page in the budget packet that was provided, the board, that shows the current distribution and what this change would look like for all schools. So no schools would end up losing. Some schools would keep staffing based on those fluctuations and some schools would actually increase their staffing.
Dr. Ivy?
I was just going to say, in regards to your first comment, that the team will take a look at the special education allocations again, with an equity lens in looking at the number, the enrollment and the programs that are at each school.
Yeah. Well, just to be clear again, I, I, I think several of us weren't saying it was enrollment, but it's also considering what is the, the caseloads.
Okay. And caseloads and programs themselves.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I'll need to go back for the safe routes to schools because I'm sending you all an email on that right now.
Excellent. I don't know how much time we're going to have for it, but I'm going for the second round. But Ms. Keys-Gamaro followed by Mr. Frisch.
Thank you. I'm happy to follow Ms. McLaughlin because I would like some clear, further clarification on both those topics, both for the assistant principal and the sped leads. And I, and the reason I want to bring this up, and Ms. McLaughlin touched on this, is I think we need to identify, I would ask our staff members to identify, what are the important factors to make sure that we're staffing appropriately with respect to both of those topics? Right? It, it may be FRM, it may also be some other things going on in the school, right? So I'm just wondering, I mean, I, I can't think of anything off the top of my head. It, it may be, are there discipline problems in the issue? Are, are the kids needing particular kinds of supports at a particular school? There may be a character at that particular school that needs to be taken into account. So I'm wondering, so for the sake of the community looking at why we make the decisions that we do, that they would be able to look at the criteria that led to how we arrived at those decisions. And I think that needs to happen with both of those positions. Does that make sense? Okay. Because I think with respect to, for sped leads, we have currently, as I understand it, we have some, in some schools, but not all schools. Is that correct? No schools? No schools?
Not elementary.
Not elementary? Okay. All right. So I, I think going forward, as we're looking at positions, it's important that we lay down, lay down what are the guiding principles as to how we're making those decisions. And then that way, if we find, oh my goodness, we have a different situation at a particular school or a group of schools, then we can then look at that overall. And the board has something, some criteria to overlook and, and we can stay in our position of being non-operational. That's what I would add to what Ms., Ms. McLaughlin stated. Other than that, I just probably need further breakdown with respect to some of the numbers. And I have a feeling that they're in some of the And I have a feeling that they're in some of the pages I haven't had a chance to go through for summer recovery and things of that nature. But I also would like to know, you know, there was a mention of the ARTs, for example, and they're, them having the responsibility of expanding the, the Scholars Program. So I know previously we had the report on the Advanced Academic Program stating that there were some schools that were utilizing it and it was having wonderful effects, and there were some schools that didn't even talk about it. So since we made that investment last year, I'm wondering whether we need to look at how that particular focus has improved our situation with respect to expanding it. So I mean, if you want to comment, you can. I have on, I got three seconds. And they didn't stop the camera. I'm watching it. They didn't stop it. They didn't stop the, you guys let my time run out. I wasn't talking. Go ahead. It wasn't three, it was five when I started talking to her, but go ahead.
I would just say that the investment last year was to increase some of the part-time ARTs to full-time. So we added some and we continue to add. And that position that was put in really allows for that professional development. I will say we've been a bit hindered this year. That person has, you know, put together asynchronous PD and put together all sorts of optional meetings, but a lot of the ARTs has been, have been used for coverage in a variety of things as we've gone on through this pandemic. So the progress may not be as fast as it will be in future years. But I think we've got a lot of momentum and good things happening with, with that specialist position, working in tandem with those ARTs. And that, that very much that laser focus to really have more coherence across the program.
So the last thing is just if, do we need to have a category dealing with, dealing with some of the concerns from the governor's emotions and things of that nature? So is there, if there's an unfunded mandate, how do we anticipate that for our budget or do we need to? I throw that out there for consideration.
We currently have a $10 million placeholder for unfunded mandates.
We, he should sign the check. But, okay, thank you.
I'll get my, my special pen out.
Okay.
And Mr. Frisch?
Thank you. I heard Ms. McLaughlin mention that she's going to be sending us an email about Safe Routes, but I did want to mention to my colleagues that Ms. Tolan and I have a budget question in about funding the Safe Routes position, which we no longer have grant money for. There is talk that the grant may return in the future at some point. But in the short term, we've had various conversations with instructional services and facilities and transportation about where the, the best fit might be and about coming up with a budget solution for that. So we're waiting on the price tag for that. And then you will likely be hearing from us in terms of advocacy and phone calls. That remains, for many of us, an extremely important position, especially as we, you know, it's been very focused on bicycle riding and, and making sure that students have access. And there's a host of other things that they could be doing as well. So look forward to having those conversations. Also want to underscore Ms. Cohen's comments about our instructional assistance and our need to do better by them. The board made great progress over the last few years on getting to that arbitrary figure attached to a, a teacher's salary. But we need to be mindful about what we're actually paying people for and have some sense to, have a rationale that, you know, is based in the, the experience and the need and the help that they all bring our system. I think that's about it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Frisch. Ms. McLaughlin, you do have a, you requested a go back. If I can ask you to be brief because we're going to, we have one more presentation today.
Yeah, I just, following up on what Mr. Frisch said, I did just send you, to all of you and to leadership team members, although I didn't get Mr. Plattenberg. So it's the two-pager from the State Routes to School Advocates. Actually, it looks like it's three, yeah, two. So the big thing is going to be, how much is the part-time position going to cost? Mr. Frisch, the only thing I would probably add to what you shared was that it's my understanding, the advocate for this program, Ms. Anderson, has also been talking with board supervisors to see if they might join us in partnership for that funding. But considering we had over $500,000 in grant funding and FCPS only had to invest $57,000 at the time, it has certainly demonstrated to have a great return on investment. And Ms. Anderson also just said that our own Elaine Tolan would be a great expert, the Get to Green model. And, you know, for people trying to understand the merits of this one as well. So I just really want to make sure you all check your inbox.
Thank you so much, Ms. McLaughlin. And with that, you teed up Ms. Tolan, who has now asked to speak.
Yes, thank you. With that, I do think we need to look really closely at this position and figure out how to make it work. I do think, you know, based on experiences that I've had, just I think so many schools I've been out to recently, you have a path in the back that's not maintained and people could walk or they could ride their bike if it was maintained. But it's probably Park Authority property. So I really appreciate your, you know, this idea of perhaps some collaboration with the county and how we figure this all out is important, too. And I think that the job description of this person really needs to just be looked at very carefully because there's so much work that we can do around improving transportation. I mean, it's part of our JET goals is, you know, working with the county on their Active Fairfax program, using, you know, the county bus program, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a big list that we can take a look at. Along those lines, Mr. Frisch and I do have a JET meeting tomorrow to get information from staff on where we are and all of our goals around that process. And I, I do think it's going to be unrealistic for us to think that we're, we're going to be able to move forward and complete these goals and manage these goals with our current staff load. So we are asking them to be, give us some information, you know, creatively, like perhaps stipends to start with. You know, maybe regional people, pyramid people, school-based, you know, what makes sense. So stay tuned. You know, that is something that, you know, we need more information and we'll be coming forward with. So those are the two things I just wanted to mention in addition to some of the other things that have been brought up today. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tolan. And I now have Ms. Marin, who has not spoken. So I want to give her the opportunity to speak before we move on to the pre-K 2 device comment.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I've been eagerly waiting for this time and we could talk about some other budget-related items, including as Ms. Tolan just initiated, the Get to Green and outdoor learning stuff. I've submitted some budget questions and, you know, waiting those responses. You know, one is about which schools do not have an outdoor classroom or learning space? And that's, I think it could be a short-term budget item, depending on, you know, how much we can, how many class, how many schools don't have an outdoor learning space? I know at my school, I was able to do it for free with my own donations, but that's not how it should go, which is the whole point of this, this ask. But can we get, you know, some low-cost to no-cost outdoor classroom setup so that every single school has a space that they know is designated for some kind of outdoor instruction? So that is something I'm wondering, can we get that in the works for this budget? You know, there is a budget question that Ms. Tolan and I had put together. And it does quantify out how much it would cost to really get, get to Green up to speed with the instructional cost. You know, my worry is that because we are really focusing on how we're doing instructional literacy, literacy instruction, rather, that, you know, I certainly don't want to, staff to be so overloaded as we're doing this giant transformation. However, we know that this work is important, the JET goals and our other, you know, priorities. So I'm just wondering, as Ms. Tolan said, can we put some funding in there? Can we put some funding in to get some sustainability coordinators at the central office level? And so I can't seem to find that, oh, here it is. It was question number 28 in last year's budget round. And so I think that that pricing still does stand. And so I'd really love if we could, you know, if colleagues are interested to really look at, is there some way we could eke out some funds somewhere to fulfill a portion of that question 28 from fiscal year 22 and get a little bit of it started? And then as well, see what we can do with the outdoor learning space question. So I will leave it at that. I don't know if staff has any response for now or if you're just going to continue to crunch those budget questions and let me know.
Ms. Burden?
I was wondering if you're just going to, we were talking about, you know, outdoor ed and if there's possibilities.
We'll, we'll continue to pull together the information as part of the budget process.
Okay. And one other thing I just want to touch on was regarding ACE. You know, to, to what extent, you know, are funds generated through the ACE program? Is, is it a self-sustaining program? And I apologize if that's somewhere that I didn't read. But does it self-sustain? Does it bring in more money than it costs?
No, it's not self-sustaining. We do have a supplement that we provide from the operating fund. You may not remember, or it may have been before you, that the Office of the Auditor General did a study of the ACE program. It might have been right before this group came on board. And in that, she acknowledged that, you know, most of those programs throughout the nation are not self-supporting because of their overhead costs and recommended that we continue our supplement. And in fact, I think we actually ended up increasing it as a result of that.
So thank you. So I know it's a really small amount. I think it was just under a million, if I'm remembering correctly, right? My question is, to what extent are, are the services we're providing, can they be provided elsewhere by another agency, such as Parks and Rec or the libraries, when it comes to those hobby-related courses? I, I see a benefit of bringing people into the school system where they might not otherwise be connected, perhaps if they're retired and looking for a course. When it comes to our mission of educating kids and preparing people for the workforce, I'm hard-pressed to extend it out further than that. So that's something I, I submitted a budget question and I really appreciate that information to, to understand the benefits of that.
Yeah, Ms. Marin, if you wanted to submit another budget question, we certainly would welcome that. What I would say is that we have, we meet every year with Parks and Rec, as well as the Community College System, to talk about course offerings. And we've been doing that for really over a decade to really minimize any, you know, duplication of services or any competition. There are some things that are not career-related or career-focused in the ACE program. And some of those things are actually some of the highest revenue generating courses that we have, which then offsets some of the need for the system to have to make a larger contribution to subsidize some of the other education-related activities. So we do work pretty hard in partnership with both the county and, and Nova Community College System on that.
Okay, well, thanks. Well, I'll look forward to that budget question answer. So thank you.
Okay, with that, we do have a budget public hearing on the 24th. And we will have another work session on the 8th of February to talk about potential amendments to the proposed budget. I do ask that any proposals for amendments need to be submitted so that the costing can be determined prior to our discussion on the 8th of February. And remember that any amendments to add items to the superintendent-proposed budget increases at request from the county. And we know where the county is at this point. On February 24th, our objective is to approve a budget. And can I finish? Thank you. It is currently scheduled for the 24th. I sent a note earlier regarding the county's timeline, which is that they will release a budget on the 22nd. We continue to have conversations with the county executive, between the county executive and the supervisor, the superintendent. And after this work session, we will have a conversation as to whether or not we need to move that budget vote up to the 10th of February, which would be in advance of the county executive releasing their budget on the 22nd. And so, Ms. McLaughlin, you have your hand up?
Well, just briefly, I don't, I don't think it's a, do we maybe have to, we have to? Because the county executive takes our budget and builds his budget and presents it. So we've never voted on our budget after he presents his budget because we're part of his budget.
I think that there is some conflicting information on this, that that's why I am going to request that we actually have that conversation as I promised and we will come back to you. But Ms. Burden, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, my understanding is they don't use our number at all. I mean, of course, the superintendent's proposed informs them. But what they include in their budget for us is based on their revenue projections and then the standard percentage that we normally get of that, which usually hovers around 52.6, 52.8%. I mean, like I said, certainly he uses the superintendent's proposed to inform, but they, their number is based on their numbers, not our numbers. That's my understanding.
So, Ms. McLaughlin, as I said, we will follow up and get back to the board on this. Okay? Appreciate it. And I appreciate you raising it because it's an important point. Now, what I would like to do is move on to the discussion of the pre-K through second-grade device discussion. This does not impact the proposed budget, but it does impact the current year's budget. Staff is requesting that the School Board flexibility reserve funding of 2.1 million in order to access a 16.3 million federal grant from the FCC to purchase up to 43,000 devices for pre-K through 2 students. The staff recommendation also includes a preliminary reservation of 1.8 million in fiscal year 22 year-end funds for warranty repair costs in classroom carts. FCPS received a large grant from the FCC's Emergency Connectivity Fund to purchase new devices and to replace the final batch of obsolete pre-K through 2 laptops. The grant will reimburse up to $400 per student device and require local funding for any additional cost. The Instructional Services Department will review the importance of age-appropriate devices for our young learners as well as the role of devices in the classroom. So with that, I would like to turn this over to our leadership team. I'm going to start with Ms. Klimanko. And I also believe that Mr. Sethi will be speaking as well.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone, and thanks for creating some time at the very end of a long day of meetings for us to bring this proposal back to you. I am joined by Mr. Sethi and Ms. Burke. Our Director of Early Childhood is also with us to, to help us with this presentation today. So just, I think that, if we want to go ahead and, oh, I think I can do it. Just to recap, I think Ms. Corbett-Sanders hit the highlights here, but it was back on, on November 9th that we brought to you this opportunity. This opportunity to really refresh devices for our pre-K 2 students using this, this reimbursement grant. And so we come to you today after that meeting where we described to you some of the instructional benefits, including our device selection of a touchscreen tablet for pre-K and K and a laptop for grades 1 and 2. We come to you today with a bit more information and a more formalized ask. You may remember that this was new business on last Thursday and will be up for a vote should you want to move forward with this funding at your next general meeting. So today, we have put together a proposal and quite a lengthy document that attempted to answer a lot of the questions that you all brought forth back in November. We're not going to go through that whole document. We have hit some highlights that we would like to just kind of share with you very quickly and leave the majority of the time for your questions. So some of the things we wanted to touch base, seemed to be the things that really came out of our conversation back in November. And we really wanted to highlight, really, why is this access for these youngest learners important? Why do they need access to these age-appropriate devices? What role will they play in the classroom? That was a resounding question of really trying to understand what this looks like for our youngest learner? How do they support the instruction? What, and then how does this project overcome our current technology, our current technology challenges? And we'll end up with just a reminder of what the financial proposal is and, and the next steps. And of course, have lots of time for questions. So starting with the important question of why, really taking a step back. We've got several reasons here that we wanted to just kind of talk about for a minute. And one really is that inequitable or equitable access to technology that we seek, right? Many of our families have many devices at home. Their students can come home. They can continue with educational applications. They can read books online. They can gather information. It sort of starts to blur the lines between school and home. But when students come home and don't have access to devices for a variety of reasons, many siblings in the house, just not available devices, they are put at a disadvantage. So having devices that our students can take home So having devices that our students can take home and have that kind of connectivity really kind of blurs that line between school and home for everyone. I think another thing is we know that technology is pervasive in our society. And this gives us the opportunity to start to build those digital citizenship and digital literacy skills at a very young age, in an age-appropriate way, if we have an age-appropriate device. I know our goal is to keep students in school, in person, every day. But as we sit here with pending snow days that are virtual, or potential school, students who are paused, or classrooms that have to go virtual, we know that students need to have access inside and outside the classroom. They need access to reliable, current devices that are age-appropriate. We know that technology brings the world to students and provides those opportunities for creativity, provides opportunities for students to really express themselves. And finally, one of the things that I think is, can be most helpful to teachers, and not replicable easily without a device, is the personalization of instruction and the data that teachers can receive about students on their foundational skills and other educational objectives. Technology makes that easier for teachers, and makes it more accessible for teachers, and allows them to be more responsive. So those are just some of the bigger reasons. And I know we already have devices in the classroom, but keep in mind that the devices that we have are our end-of-life sort of devices. So we'll talk more about that in a little bit. Definitely, some of the questions that came up last time were around, well, what would this look like? And a lot of the things I just said is on the column on the left. What the role in the classroom of these devices would be. So I won't go through them, given our, given our time. What I want to focus on is what they are not. And these devices are not the replacement for a highly qualified teacher. It is that highly qualified teacher that needs to know how to implement these in an appropriate way, given the age of the students and the available applications. It's not a replacement for all the things we want to see our students doing in the classroom that are hands-on, that are interactive with each other and building relationships. And finally, the intent is not to have students come to school and sit at a device all day. I know that everyone around this table, and all, everyone around this table and in this room, have a concern for screen time. We have a concern for screen time for our youngest learners and our oldest learners. But being completely mindful that we think of our youngest learners as really needing, not a balance of 50/50, but how this enhances their education, but does not replace the quality early learning experiences we want students to have. One of the things that came up last time was really trying to understand what this looks like, probably especially at pre-K. So I'm going to turn this over to, sorry, I need to click the switch, to Mara Burke, who, as I said, is our Director of Early Childhood, so she can sort of illuminate that for you.
First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to share some of our ideas today about what it looks like instructionally for our youngest learners. And I do want to emphasize exactly what Noel said, is that this is really looking at enhancing the instruction for children. It would never take the place of a qualified teacher and those wonderful experiences that they provide. So when we first look at this, this is a nice opportunity to maybe extend some self-regulation or social skills for young children. We could use a variety of apps, either in large or small group, or even individually, children could access these apps to extend maybe a morning meeting, get kids settled, and even children could access it throughout the day. So if they had those moments where, if you have young children, or if you've ever been in a classroom with young children, sometimes they just need those moments to get those wiggles out again. And it's a nice way for them to be able to recognize that first in themselves and use a strategy like, an app like Go Noodle to do that. Another opportunity might be in Language Arts, where we could look at some kids beginning to understand syllables. And we often do that with clapping with kids. We do it around their names. We, you know, use pictures and kids begin to clap. This could be another extension of that, where kids could have these opportunities at home, as well as in school, through the Waterford Program, which we already have in our classrooms, where they would use this program to begin to deepen their understanding of segmenting words. It also, just so you know, Waterford also, to Noel's point, is individualized. So it's based on kids' pace. They go through it at their own pace and understanding. So again, that would be individualized based on students' needs. And again, this would all be a teacher choice of whether it was appropriate for a child or the group, a group of children. And then finally, another opportunity could be in mathematics. We all know that kids are learning shape, shapes at this young age. We do that with manipulatives. We point things out in the real world. And what a great way for children to use the camera to begin to show what they know about shapes, to go out in the real world, take photographs, create a book that could then be brought home and talked to with their families. And families could be engaged again around their young children's learning around shapes. We could even extend it more, where kids could use the, write the names of the shapes, if that's where they were. It could be individualized for children who weren't quite there yet, just matching shapes, counting shapes, different things like that. But again, all this could be individualized based on a child's needs and understanding of the concept of shapes.
Thanks, Mara. And just to kind of reiterate, these tools, you know, students learn how to use these tools and can take these tools home. And then all of a sudden, now they can sit with their parents, and it becomes a shared learning experiences, and again, blurring that line between school and home, and really increasing engagement for the parents with their education. I think second grade is probably a little bit more obvious, but since we were doing pre-K, we thought we'd just touch on the upper grades, which would be the laptops. And I think most of you realize that in Language Arts and Math, we use a lot of the workshop model, a lot of station rotations. So these just provide a variety, a variety of opportunities. Sometimes it's a change in modality, right? That students really like to read a book. Other students, there's not a book in the library they want. All of a sudden, they can go on Myon. They can get a book off of Myon and read it. Sometimes it's really an either/or. Both are accessible. Other times, things like, okay, making a video. This is a world that gets opened to them if they wanted to do a reading response in a reading response journal, or maybe make a Flipgrid video. So it just provides some other modalities for novelty and engagement. In math and Language Arts, we have, we have reading programs such as ST Math and Imagine Learning, that again, it's that personalization, those practice and development of those foundational skills. We chose these programs intentionally because of the language load that makes these very accessible for all of our learners, and provides that data to teachers and that feedback to students. And real quickly, looking at social studies and science, and really, this applies to anything, but thinking about how having access technology really brings the outside world in. Our second graders study the Playbill Indians in the Southwest. And look, there's a virtual field trip, you know, as opposed to just reading a book about it. They could really learn about it by seeing it through a virtual field trip. Also, PBL is really enhanced when students have devices to research or to create products. This is a picture here of some students at one of our schools who have been working on a zoology PBL. So these tools just are, they're just tools, right? They're not instruction. They're not everything to, they're not the only thing happening in the classroom. But they really do provide a lot of opportunities for students to own their own learning and to engage. And my final, my final comment about really instruction is we talk about Fortuita graduate, and we talk about, you know, what we would like our students to develop when they leave us. But that journey actually starts when they join us. We start that right away. We start with them understanding about being critical thinkers and creative thinkers. And technology can really be leveraged in order to do that. And we can do that in a way that promotes digital citizenship and digital literacy schools from, skills from a really early age for all of our learners. So I'd like to just turn it over right now to Mr. Sethi, who's going to talk a little bit about our, our devices.
Thank you, Noel. Very quickly, at the beginning of the pandemic, FCPS issued every student a device. Many of those devices initially were repurposed devices, which we pulled from other classrooms and deployed them as best as possible. Over the course of the last two years, we received a couple of grants, one from the county, one from ESAR, which the board approved for us to purchase devices for other grade levels. Our pre-K 2 devices are still the original repurposed devices. What we consider them to be now, 85% of those devices are considered to be now obsolete. That means they have gone beyond a certain life. We continue to repair and put them back into the fleet to be used in the classrooms, but they're just getting older. And as we all know, older technology gets challenging when you're loading newer programs and supporting it. Things like Zoom could be a challenge on those devices to continue to operate. So we have an opportunity in front of us. We received approval from FCC's Emergency Communications Fund, which will reimburse us up to $400 per device. So we have an opportunity to go out and buy brand-new devices for our pre-K 2 students, which are age-appropriate. That grant will reimburse us up to the $16.3 million in, from the federal communications. We'll have to come up with $2.1 million of local funds. The local fund amount is equal to the amounts we have to spend in our matching anything over the $400 per device. So when it's over $400, we have to pay out of our own pocket. And we also, from the previous proposals that we put forward, we have also value-engineered these proposals to reduce the upfront cost. There was a lot of concern about bringing money in this current school year or financial year to be able to purchase these devices, because this grant has to be put in for reimbursement by the end of the, end of the school year. So we re-engineered a cost to be able to split the long-term manufacturers' extended warranty purchases to later years, and be able to do a self-repair fund, which is what we are requesting, an additional $1.8 million after this financial year to be able to allocate towards the repair fund. So this is our current timeline. If we can, we are up for approval on January 27th. We have mentioned this before, but just for reference, we are up against the timeline, because we need to get these orders out and our devices shipped and delivered, so we can file for reimbursement before the June 30th deadline from the FCC Communications Program. With that, we'll be happy to take any questions.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And we really appreciate the, you all made some changes since we last spoke, and it captured it, your approach, very well. So I appreciate it. I'm going to start with Melanie Maron, followed by Ms. Cohen, Kees, Gamar, and McLaughlin.
Thanks. So I have a few comments and a few questions. What I'm hearing from, from my community are two things. One is, for the younger ones, there is frustration that the students and the families and the teachers have at old devices. I was over at Marshall Road Elementary just last week, and this was a need. I'm also hearing that to supplement that, some PTAs might be using funds to buy devices. And I really don't agree with that. It's not equitable, and it also makes it very hard to service that and provide professional development on that. So, you know, I've heard of that happening in different places. And I really want to find a way to, at least right now, to help that, those situations. Can we get some newer devices in, just to help right now? The other thing, I like, I like that I'm hearing you, Ms. Klimanko, talk about it as a tool. And indeed, you know, thinking about the end of the first grade and second grade that my child had during COVID, and with the shutdown is, you know, I saw the resources were pretty good. I mean, ST Math, it's great. It's just visual. Like, I could see how it's just used as a tool. And so I like that you have that displayed about what it is and what it isn't. But my question, my first question is, what are the guardrails and the process that's going to be needed to ensure that they remain tools and not the seminal way that instruction is happening? And I think that's partly a question for you, Ms. Klimanko, but also partly a question of the board. Does our governance, do we need to have a policy that further directs how devices for young children will be used?
So I do think it becomes difficult if you're thinking about a time constraint, right? If you say, no student should be on a certain, you know, some amount of time. When you look at the most current research, they really don't talk about screen time in the, in the sense of time. They talk about it in the sense of what is a student doing. So I think it comes down to the instructional guidance and the curriculum guidance that we provide. I don't think if a, if a teacher was going to accomplish the full breadth of the curriculum, it could be done through our tools, right? Like, it would be, there's many things that need to be done through direct instruction, through small group instruction, in the plethora of different instructional models that we use. So I don't think that we sit in, we sit in a position where I would say that the technology is going to overtake. I don't know if you're thinking of a time, but I think a time would be really hard to manage for a teacher, to say, well, this child's been on this long, and this long, and those kinds of things. So I would refrain from going towards a time. I think the guidance is more around the types of activities that students should be doing on the computers.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I think that, when I think of like those further guardrails, though, it also extends to how the device is being transferred home into school. I've heard from several folks, and just in reading online, comments about, you know, parents really aren't thrilled about their little one bringing a device back and forth, and the feeling that, you know, when they're home, at that age, they shouldn't be doing homework. And while it wouldn't be assigned homework, it's still there. But, you know, I know just as a parent, I mean, these things, you can't resist them, the devices. And so even if you are doing something educational, it becomes this thing you have to fight with your kid about. But, you know, you can't be on it, even if you're doing ST Math. So is there some thought around, you know, prescribing when the devices would have to go home? Like, such as when we think there's going to be virtual learning happening because of a uptick in, you know, sickness, or because of a snow day, rather than every day back and forth?
So I do think that that's something that we could look at. Certainly, where we're sitting right now, we're like, make sure kids take devices home tonight, because there might be something tomorrow, right? We're in that mindset. I think that works. It works completely, except for we do have families that there are no devices at home, right? So we don't want to necessarily, you know, eliminate that opportunity. So it's a little bit of a dance there, as far as what that guideline would be.
Yeah, and I'm aware that some families have already opted out on using FCPS devices, because they have devices at home that they prefer. So I'm very aware of the equity matter of it as well. I think too, that I want to mention that I really do appreciate the new, the app or the thing, the Lightspeed system, where you can get a report on what your kid's been doing all week. I've enjoyed seeing that as a parent as well. I think that's a good thing. I think we need to advertise it more. I've been trying to advertise it. And why, my last question is, why laptops for first and second grade? Why not touch devices?
So when we did a bit of a small pilot, as much as we could do during COVID, that was the preferred device, as far as the, really, the transition from, from, I guess, early childhood to the older students. When we first looked at it, and Mr. Sethi could, could comment on this, we were looking at touchscreen laptops, but I think those became cost prohibitive.
Yeah, and trying to manage to the value-engineer side of it, the touchscreen laptops became cost prohibitive. But also, the touchscreen interface doesn't lend itself to the same interaction as the iPads. So those are two different universes when it comes to interacting with a computer. And the transition to the older grades, and then the ability for those students to be able to learn how to type their passwords, use more of the older tools to transition to the upper elementary grades, is what pushed us towards the laptops for the first and second grades.
Okay, I appreciate that input. I mean, just thinking of my own experience, I'm probably more inclined for touchscreen for the littlest ones, but I hear the arguments. I just, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Ms. Cohen?
Thank you. I'm going to pick back up on that from Ms. Maron. I do, I would like us to get in the habit of working with OCCR to, when these go home in the beginning of the year, to come home with a message about Lightspeed. Because parents don't know about it. I know it's new. I think it would be great if it was literally a piece of paper that is taped to your, like, here's your child's cord, don't lose it, put their name on it, here's your, and here's how you can monitor what happens, because parents just don't know what's happening. And we've heard some scary stories. I will say, so many people have given you such, you know, amazing credit for some of the things that you've done recently, in making sure that kids can't install VPN, their own personal VPNs. I mean, things that really are, some of the stories were horrific, that kids were misusing, again, not our intended purpose, but using this for something that was wholly inappropriate. And it seems like you have just gone above and beyond to try as best as you can to turn this into an educational device and not entertainment or making bad choices. So I guess one question I have that I asked last time is, how were S-BETS and T-Specs and pre-K through 2 teachers involved in the proposal?
So there was, there was a small pilot that was done. And I don't remember how many, how many schools were involved, but it was about four, 12, about 12 schools that we got feedback from. And those schools would have been teachers, and I believe we tried to include, and Ms. Burke might remember. Burke, remember, some students and parents in that, too. It was a little bit upended by, by COVID, but we did the best we can to get, to get that input. I do think that there was a desire for those younger students to have the touchscreen. I think that was something that people saw as age-appropriate for those youngest learners and something we, we really are lacking right now.
And in terms of, like, for T-Specs, who will have to get these set up, and our ESPITS, who then will have to train our teachers on how to incorporate something that's new, some teachers are definitely using iPads and things in their teaching, but a lot are not. How will we ensure that they have enough time and ability to, to retrain teachers on these devices?
So each summer, we, we do some outreach with, with our ESPITS, and I'll let Mr. Sethi talk about the T-Specs, but this would have to be, well, first of all, we would like to do a small pilot this, this spring, because I think it's really important to get these in the hands of a few more schools and students and really do some learning so that our pilot, so that our implementation can be informed. And then this summer, we always have ESPITS sort of opportunities for, for professional development. So for our elementary, this would be, this would be a main thrust of, of what we need to, to put out. You know, last year, we had Schoologee, which we're still, you know, we're still working with, but, you know, every year, there's new things that people have to learn. As far as for the teachers, it is going to be kind of a, a little bit of a slower role. You know, they're going to, the ESPITS will have to support them sort of more job embedded. We don't have, I, I would love to think we're going to have the ability, if we get those extra days maybe to do some things, but I can't make a hard promise that we have that time carved out. So it will either be a balance of, of opportunities to have time outside the classroom to learn, and then ESPITS pushing into team meetings and classrooms to support.
And will we support that if, if, for example, the ESPITS found a professional development opportunity that they wanted to use on a workday? We support that financially, right? Like, we will, we will pay for them to be able to go and do that kind of training on a, on a professional workday.
So are you saying for ESPITS to get more training? I do think that, you know, if we end up with iPads, and I don't want to overspeak, so please raise a flag, you know, there's a lot of things that Apple provides, a lot of free things, a lot of things that we would engage with. I don't think, I don't think we want 140 ESPITS running around finding something that they're interested in doing, but certainly if it's things, I think we should, we definitely need to listen to our ESPITS community about what they need and how they would best like to, to learn.
And I, I'll add to that in a couple of ways, and thank you for recognizing the effort the IT team is putting towards kind of managing all the technology and, and how kids try to circumvent or get around those technology controls. And it's a constant battle, and we'll keep up with it. From a T-Spec perspective, we have, we are invested in a new tool to bring the iPad, so they are sort of this out-of-box experience, which reduces the amount of time that T-Specs would have to spend to provision each device. And that is a general guidance for us from reaching out to the schools to say, how can you use technology to make your lives easier, so you don't have to spend hours and hours every summer going through all these devices and repurposing them? So we, we invest at the time, we already have that tool in working, because we still own about 10,000 devices for our special education students, so we have started implementing that technology with those. And we're also in, in, because of that technology being in the schools for special education students, we're training our T-Specs on that. So that process has already started for the special education laptops. We feel we'll save a tremendous amount of time in deploying, in the ability to take back a device, give out a loan or device, just that whole life cycle. So that is already happening, and we'll continue to invest in that and streamline our processes so it reduces the time.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I'm so glad you just transitioned right into my last question, which is about the ability to ability to interface with some of the assistive technology that our students with disabilities use. So just the idea that if a class, if a class is all going home with something that looks like this, you know, how do we make sure that a kid who is using a device that's different than this or is not able to access this particularly well, how, how are we going to try to mitigate that as best as possible?
So we already, and there's a whole team dedicated to this, which, which works the intersection of technology and the special education support. We already provide touchscreen laptops for our special education students, so that, that carve-out is done early in the process. Obviously, the iPads are also available, depending on, on their requirements and needs, and we'll continue to invest in the assistive technology features which come on these newer devices. They allow for a lot more engagement in the ability to use content, but magnification, speaking out loud, much, much newer set of technologies available to use with these newer devices.
And are we gonna, sorry, I lied, that wasn't my last question. Are we, you know, we're looking at like ST math, which is not helpful for our visually impaired or low-vision kids. Are we looking then to enhance or, or add to our technology, software systems, or whatever we use, knowing if we're going to be getting these devices, it may change some of the things that we're purchasing, or?
So I think we're in continuous review. I mean, we've had some really great conversations with ST math and with Imagine Learning around some of the limitations. As we've gone to virtual learning, those, those really kind of were really, and put right in front of us, right? And this, it's amazing how responsive these, these companies are. So we are working with them on some, I'm working in partnership with DSS to come up with some, some responses to those specifically. But yes, it is a continuous process to identify software that, and, and I think that in the past, to be honest, we've kind of looked at software here and software here, and we need to, we need to look at software that can be used by everybody, because I think it really does make us more of an inclusive classroom.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you saying that.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. Kees Gamarra?
Yes, so I will follow along that line. I actually have two primary questions. I wanted to know if we knew the, the overall cost that it would come to, or if we have any idea what this investment would be. But I was also, you know, I'm assuming this is reaching out to our preschool programs, and I know, I believe a lot of those children come in not necessarily speaking English. So how do these devices, how can these devices serve them? Or do they serve them?
I can speak to the cost, and that is also included in the packet, which we, the extended packet we have attached. We will be investing $18.4 million, of which we'll get $16.3 million back. That's for the initial purchase, and we'll, we'll have to get $2.1 million out of pocket, as we were talking about. We also have the additional purchase of the charging carts, which we need to do in the next financial year, and the allocation towards the repair fund. That is, those are one-time investments. Once we're done with them, we won't need them anymore, so.
Until we need an updated device?
After four years, yes. Generally, four to five years is what we have, the device life is.
Okay. All right. And did you want to speak to how we're serving kids that don't speak English or may need support at that level, utilizing these devices?
Yes, similar to any tool, there would be a learning curve for all kids, and, and teachers would need to support that. I think one thing that is particularly interesting about the iPad is it can speak, you know, in multiple languages to the user. So that's an option for kids if needed, but as you can imagine, I sit at least every day, and I watch kids come in who are applying, parents are applying for the program, who are not speaking English, who are on these tools, amazing me every day. I sit next to them. So their learning curve is very different than us as adults, but there are these components to the iPad that would support kids in hearing information in their own language first, if needed.
So in the instance where we have a teacher that doesn't speak the language that the child speaks, maybe you could walk us through how there would be a bridge here and how this device would fit into that situation?
So I think, like, any learning experience for a child who's learning English, you would use a lot of visuals, you would use a lot of gestures, you would, you would show, you would allow them to do it, there would be this back and forth. Technology, particularly with young children, we love when it's, it is best when it's done in conjunction with an adult. It's just not hand it over and do what you may with it. So there, like, any, any new experience for a young child, there would be this back-and-forth experiential piece to it before there might be independence on it.
Okay. My, my pri, one of my primary concerns was really how we're making sure, we're recognizing that there are different types of communication from our children, and if we're giving them devices, how adaptive are those devices to those various methods of communication? There was a question earlier with respect to, you know, does there need to be a policy, et cetera, to, as to how these are used? I'm assuming that the use of these devices would be guided by best practices and that that's, if you want to expound on that.
Yes.
If my, if my assumption is wrong, tell me that, too.
Yes, you know, everything we do is guided by best practice and what research says, and we've included some of that in the proposal about, especially for our youngest learners, what that might look like. But yes, we would be giving guidance, would be incorporated into our curriculum documents, really suggestions on how best to leverage the, the tools in appropriate ways.
Okay. And, and along with that, I assume that that would address some of the balance issues because everybody's concerned about kids being on devices way more than they need to, and the way that a young person learns typically is better, you know, with play, through play, through interaction, through being able to see a person, et cetera. So I'm assuming all of that is a part of this process. So I will give back my minute and some seconds.
Thank you, Ms. Kees Gamarra. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yeah, I, I, this, this proposal's tough for me, because I, I don't feel like I have enough information about when we're told this is best practice, but I don't have anything that tells me that's the best practice. Like, in terms of the WABE schools, just in the Washington area, what other schools are literally using the model that you all want to pilot or refine, as you put in the presentation, that, that this is what they're doing? Because, I mean, in the end, I, I, my, my second question would be to Mr. Sethi is, you know, okay, so I understand that we're lucky to use some of this funding now and reimbursement, but in four years, then what money are we going to use? And, you know, so, and, and then what are we looking at in terms of the T-Specs and all of the staffing that require when you suddenly have more of these devices? So honestly, I felt like this, the PowerPoint presentation and even just reading through the document, I'm just not understanding, what are we doing that's going to be similar to people living in the Washington metro area that can count on us also looking like the 21st century instruction, but to what Ms. Kees Gamarra said, we absolutely have families, and particularly pre-K to second grade now, who, their initial reaction's going to be, the last thing I want you to do is start, is to put more, you know, devices and tablets in front of my kids. I'm all for it, especially when we're trying to help students who have additional instructional needs, but for the general population, I, I don't even see how this was maybe broken out to say, this is for our students who have these additional special needs. And so I don't know if anybody can answer, like, what, there just seems like there's hidden costs that aren't laid out here in terms of staffing and salaries and benefits and retirement that we pay into. I mean, it all has a role, and you can't be buying this many devices and it not have all of the staffing and personnel costs that are going to be, you know, recurring and ongoing.
So keeping in mind that, you know, many of our students or all of our students right now actually have access to devices. That's why we, that's how we survived the last two years, right? So it's not like we don't have these devices. We will be refreshing these devices with ones that are more age-appropriate and ones that are not at the end of their life cycle. So this, this is a, an opportunity, instead of us refreshing these computers ourselves and paying for the whole bill, but in order for us to get reimbursement for, for this purchase. Now, in the, in the proposal, we did include Alexandria, Arlington, Loudon, and Prince William and the devices they have, and, and they all have devices starting at pre-K, different ones, some have iPads, some have Chromebooks, but you'll see that it is very similar, that, that it is, is becoming ubiquitous, and I say that in a way, not that it's 100% a use of your time, but it is another tool in the classroom, starting at a very, a very young age. We did, I'm sorry, that's on page eight. Oh, on mine, it's eight. Seven or eight, depending on how it broke out. We also included a little bit of the research around, you know, what are the appropriate uses for the younger, for the younger students? Because I certainly hear you, I certainly hear that, that after the last couple of years of virtual learning, parents are like, you know, just let us get back to, you know, traditional, traditional school. And I think that a lot of traditional school is still what we want, but there is that part that we want to hold on to, that will provide us some opportunities for students, both in the personalization of their learning and in the, the creative, the creative sense, too.
To, to the question on sourcing the technology, obviously, over the last two years, we have had to provide every student a device so they can be connected. I think as we progress forward, we have to have a collective conversation and continue to have it, and given our devices are recent, we'll have a few years to have this conversation, but we continue to have the conversation, what amount of technology do we actually want in a classroom to supplement or work with a teacher and the instruction models that are provided? If we come to a conclusion that we want to reduce it or minimize it or completely take it out, that is certainly a decision we can make and, and start deprecating the devices in the out-years. This opportunity stands in front of us to be able to leverage the replacement, because all the devices we have right now are aging and will, are obviously causing concerns, as Ms. Marin was saying, and they will continue to, to grow in their age and continue to cause additional concerns.
Thank you. So I know we also talk about our concern about the environment. So we buy these new devices, then what happens to the ones that we're getting rid of?
So there's a program in which all old technology gets recycled back into the environment. We have a vendor who comes and works with a warehouse. I can get you additional details.
No, I just, I wanted to get an idea. So the, these devices that we'll purchase, they'll last another four to five years as well, and then?
Four years at a minimum, and if we need to extend it, we can certainly, as we've been extending for the current students, extend them a few more years. In many cases, if they're the same devices, we'll use them for parts and pieces to continue extending the other devices we have in our fleet. Sometimes the parts are interchangeable, so we can scavenge them for parts. But ultimately, when they're end of life, much like with any other technology, it is sent to a recycler through a warehouse program, and then they take care of it.
So to something Ms. Klimenko said, that we, we already have these, this is how we got through virtual learning for our students. So is there a reason that we're needing these and the other school divisions aren't?
I can't speak to other school divisions and where they are in their refresh cycle and what they've purchased. I don't know that we have that information at the table, but as Mr. Sethi said, as we bought devices, we kept pushing the, the newest that we had down, but, so our youngest learners are now sitting with our oldest devices. They're slow, they're not age-appropriate kind of devices. As we look to having a virtual learning day, you know, maybe this week, the, the four and three-year-olds have, have laptops that are way bigger and way heavier than this one. It's, it's really just, I can't really speak to the other school divisions.
Okay. Well, I really appreciate, Maura, you, you've continued to be an expert in early child learning. I would just ask that if you all can just have something that, Maura, with our partnership with University of Virginia and our, our pre-K programming, I think that would go a long way for the board, being able to show its due diligence, that, you know, here's an external research advocate, that this is a good thing to be doing with the devices themselves. I'd appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. And please put that into the next steps as well. Mr. Frisch, followed by Ms. Seizmerheiser, and then Ms. Tolan.
Thank you. If memory serves me, in February of 2020, when we had the conversation about expanding FCPS on, at least the first time for this board, we were presented with data about what other school divisions had for each grade level, so we may want to grab that and reshare it. Now, that's probably changed because of COVID. As Ms. Cohen just reminded me, one school division had to replace their entire stock of, of technology. So it's probably a little different, but it's a good starting point. And I, I'm grateful that we're taking advantage of this grant to update the technology and that we don't have to foot the bill entirely on our own, but I do have some questions. It seems that we're assuming a lot about parents' knowledge of technology. One of the issues that we confronted during virtual learning was difficulty from some parents in accessing or helping their, their children access technology. What resources can we make available to help parents through that, if that's the case going forward?
Yeah, we do, we put a lot on our webpage, but again, you have to access the technology to get to it. So I think some of those, especially with our youngest learners, come best from, from technology nights that schools often host, to get parents technology nights that schools often host, to get parents involved and engaged at the school level, so they can actually hear about how it's being used with their child, as opposed to, you know, a county presentation about, about technology. When we first started FCPS ON, we did some of that at our high school levels to inform the community and get, get people excited, and I think we would, you know, we could look at doing some things like that.
Yeah, I'd be interested in knowing what the fidelity of implementation across the division is with, with those kinds of things, which kind of brings me to my second point. Many of the questions that have been asked beyond just the aspects of buying the technology have centered around efficacy and other issues. And there was a follow-on motion from Ms. Bukarski and Ms. Kies-Gamara at that February 2020 meeting, just to read from it, it says, "I move to, to approval of a follow-on motion to direct the superintendent to develop and present to the board a comprehensive and strategic plan of action for the large-scale FCPS ON implementation in schools to include objectives, benchmarks, and metrics. The review should include best practices and an impact for high school, middle school, elementary-age students, and address usage within demographic groups that require differentiations. The board is interested in addressing the following: curriculum integration, professional development, guidelines for proper ergonomics and eye safety, appropriateness of mixed media for use by certain age groups, examination of information developed by other districts, et cetera." I think, speaking for myself, yes, go ahead.
No, keep.
Please finish.
No, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say that, you know, obviously, right after that COVID happened and, you know, we didn't come back to the board with that information, but we've had a longstanding partnership throughout the FCPS ON implementation with Johns Hopkins University, and they've provided annual program evaluations, they do classroom observations, focus group interviews, surveys, that really address many, if not all, of those items that were included in that follow-on motion. We've continued to stay engaged with them even throughout the pandemic, so they've, you know, had to modify their program evaluations to be, you know, focused on different outcomes. But we'd be happy if the board was interested to reengage, you know, in a work session, for example, share information from recent program evaluations and have them come in and speak about, you know, some of the strengths that they see in our program and areas for improvement.
I think that would be great, and I think it would address many of the issues that people may have questions about. And if we could, if we could even have access to the past reports, that would be great, too.
Absolutely.
And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Ms. Seizmerheiser?
So, one thing I would like to sort of dig into a little bit more is the importance of these devices, given the change in our snow day policy, and given the fact that we're in the middle of the Omicron surge, and I don't know what other Greek letter might come next, but there may be another Greek letter or two coming. So can you talk a little bit more about, you know, what the experience has been for our youngest learners using the current devices they have? You know, when they were in virtual learning last year, or if they have to go back for a day for snow days, or whatever it may be this year, if they're quarantining, if they're isolating at home and need to access materials on Schoologee? What has that experience been like, if you know?
So I can, I'll talk current, and then Ms. Park, if you want to say anything about last year. But, you know, throughout this year, we've had different moments when we thought, oh, is something going to happen? Are we going to need to go virtual? Not necessarily at a division level, but classroom, we've had students who've been paused. And schools have been, have been working hard to ensure that, that they are ready for that. Certainly, as Omicron came and now virtual days, it feels a little bit more pressing, like this is going to happen at some point, we are going to have a virtual learning day. So we are prepping, schools are prepping right now to make sure each student has a device and that our youngest learners know how to log on to Schoologee and how to, and how to, and how to get into Zoom, and then that we have messages ready to go to parents, so parents know how to do those things, because certainly our youngest learners, when they go home, it will be like, what am I supposed to do? So we're preparing communications that schools would send out to remind parents where the log, the logins are and where the supports are to help their students log on. What we've seen in classrooms recently is that a lot of these machines are very slow to boot up, slow to run the programs, and certainly with our youngest learners, where the attention span is, is somewhat shorter, that certainly can, can diminish the experience. During, during the last couple of years, maybe Maura would like to speak to that.
So last year, when we were all virtual, as you can imagine, it took many weeks to get our youngest learners really up and almost have a full class and engaged, because parents had to be very much involved in the log-on process and all of those, those pieces, just to even get kids into, into, onto their computer. And so anecdotally, what I heard from teachers is, you know, there was frustration on parents' part and as well as children's part, and, and teachers themselves in terms of getting kids up and going. Once they were up, there was a more limited ability of what they could do while they were in school, technically, in virtual school. So, because it was hard, just hard for some students to navigate the back and forth between a program. So if they were on virtually and then they were asked to do something on a pair deck or something like that, some kids were able to do that, depending on their computer, other kids were not able to do that. So sometimes that became something that was asked to do with a parent later. So there were some hurdles based on the age of the, the computers and children's ability to navigate that easily, because it required a touchpad, which, you know, I don't know, you use a touchpad, some I get, times I get frustrated with my touchpad on my computer. But if it, if they could touch the screen itself and navigate it, it's much easier for them to do so.
Great, thank you. I mean, of course, you know, we all recognize that in-person learning is best for our students. We want to do everything we can to ensure that they stay in person and our classes stay open, and we have our subs and our teachers in our class and reduce our transmission in school and all of those pieces. But the reality of what we're living in, you know, I, I just wanted to mention that this is a possibility, you know, in, as a class or for students who are paused, and hopefully, as more of our students get vaccinated, right, that pausing, quarantining will change as well. But I just wanted to put that out there. The other thing, you mentioned something earlier about, and I think Ms. Kies-Gamara mentioned, and maybe Ms. Omeish, about students who speak different languages, right, and the accessibility of, of these programs, and how there's actually some translation potential features in these iPads that can help with that. Can you talk about that a little bit more?
So, Apple obviously natively comes with an app. It's called Translate, that allows you to have sort of a conversational, it can speak out the language in different languages. There's multiple third-party apps. The, the thing we will unlock as we move towards this, it'd be this universe of apps, which are much more nimble and much more easily accessible on some of the handheld devices, as opposed to your computers, and those abilities would, would be only after we practice and kind of learn and grow with them, allow us to do things which we haven't even thought of as yet.
What would that impact be? And I know, obviously, it's hard to know, do we use them on our students who may not enter our school speaking English, or ESOL programs, or the ability for some of our ESOL students to be able to be more in the general education population? And I, you know, I'm not as familiar with how that works, but what, what do you think that impact could be if the students had this?
I definitely think it increases access to what's happening in the classroom for those students, right, in a comprehensible way. So, you know, I, I don't think it's a sweeping, all of a sudden, X happens, but I definitely think that that experience in, in a classroom is, is a better experience for our, our English learners.
Thank you. And also, in terms of, you mentioned differentiation as well in the classroom. You know, I will say that, you know, I, I very much am concerned about what we've seen around the studies around screen time, around what my colleagues have shared about setting these devices home, and, you know, the fights with parents around using them and not. So I, I very much think guardrails around this in terms of best practices in the building, as well as when they're sent home, is very important. I mean, it's very, very important and very valid, but I will just share my own personal experience as someone who started school not speaking English and feeling very scared and very lost. I think something that would help translate just a little bit what was going on in the classroom would have done a lot to me to feel, reduce my anxiety, my own stress level. So just sharing my own personal experience there. So I mean, I'm inclined, especially given the times we live in, to support this, but I do think it's really important to have some of these really strict guidelines and guardrails and best practices and training, so these devices are used to support and enhance the student experience and learning. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Seizmerheiser. Ms. Tolan?
Thank you very much for bringing all of this additional information, you know, after our last discussion. I really appreciate it, and I am excited to potentially take advantage of this grant opportunity, you know, given the, the teaching techniques and everything that you talked about, or the, the tool, I should say. I did have a question, reading in the report on page nine, we are talking here about ESPITS and T specs. And if you can just refresh my memory, I know we have it here in bold, that we improved the staffing ratio in the summer of 2020 to include one T spec per 750 students at the elementary level, and you are recommending that we perhaps change that to one full-time T spec per 600 students in order to, you know, have enough technical support for all these devices? Is that something, it's not in our current budget, correct?
No, it's, it's not in our current budget proposal, but the amount of technology, we also deployed, if you remember, during the pandemic, we deployed audiovisual technology for the classrooms, which also became something that our classroom tech supported. So we foresee that in the future, as more of this technology gets into the classroom, while they're newer and should have less technical issues, will demand more support in the classroom. So in the out years, we would, we wanted to put this out there. Even before these devices, we've been looking at reducing the ratios in the elementary schools to get more technical support into those class, schools.
Now, I appreciate that, and I completely understand the workload and the need for this. You know, I spent the day in the office at Spring Hill Elementary on Friday, and with the impending snow, I have to say, the most frantic people in and out of that office were the ESPIT and the T spec. So I completely understand that, I just want to make sure that we have the full picture of the budget imp- implications. Thank you. It's getting late, obviously. So if, you know, do you think that's a good next year budgets?
Yeah, foreseeably, next year or somewhere along the way, we, we just need to continuously invest in improving our T spec ratios. At this point, we're at the 750 mark for the elementary schools, and we have different numbers, and we can send you a report if you need to see, because our high schools, the larger high schools, get allocated two T specs, and then we have a sliding ratio depending on number of students.
And along those same lines, and again, forgive me, I've asked this question before, and I know it's always, the ESPITS and taking a look at that job description and, you know, the hours and the contracts, where are we with that?
So we are continuously looking at that. Our, our ESPITS team, the team that managed that out of Instructional Services, has been doing some outreach to different groups to kind of gather current state, obviously the job of the ESPIT and the T spec, but the ESPIT certainly shifted tremendously during, during COVID. And so we're really trying to get a kind of a handle on what kinds of things are happening now. One of the main things about an ESPIT is though, we have ESPITS management and IS, those are managed at the school level, so they are evaluated by principals. And so we do have some level of flexibility for what's appropriate for the school, but we really do want to make sure we look at that job description and really have clarity to make the job manageable, because it is just growing by leaps and bounds. So we don't have, we don't have an end date for when that would come, but it is something we are collecting data on right now.
Okay, and we've been talking about it for a long time.
Well, we actually did quite a bit of work a few years ago, just, you know, and, and I think some of you have put forward budget questions, or at least email questions about ESPIT salaries and what scale they're on, so that's an ongoing conversation. And actually, the teachers' associations have been reaching out to have that conversation as well. So it's definitely gaining more and more interest. But there isn't, there's no, there's nothing in this year's current budget to make any, any changes, so it would be a little bit longer term.
Okay, just want to make sure we have the support for, you know, what we're doing, because the ESPITS plays such a huge role in professional development. And, you know, as we've talked, that's so key to any new initiative, so just appreciate all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Omeish?
Thank you, and thank you to staff for bringing this back. I know, you know, we had some reservations earlier on, and you all helped flesh out some of the thinking around this. You know, I think we all obviously share the concerns that we don't want our kids to be, you know, spending all their time on this. You all shared instructionally how you're thinking about that as well. I think the, the other key part, you know, Ms. Seizmerheiser was touching on that, at this point, in our current reality, it's, it's a necessity in many ways, right, that that kids have access. And, and not only that, but that it's already present. I think that's a key part of this, right? The community often has a strong reaction when we talk about this, how are we going to pull it off, all the considerations, but kids already have laptops, they're just terrible laptops, and they're not age-appropriate. So this is really meant to kind of just replace it to something that best, aligns better with best practices and is instructionally more appropriate for these kids. I say that to say that there might also be opportunity here. We talked about, you know, language as in, as a potential piece, although I also want a caveat that we don't want to develop dependence in kids who need to learn those skills, right? And then, of course, you know, even for kids with disability, communication, there's opportunity in thinking of the tool even being a different form of expression, et cetera. So all of that's to say, I'm encouraged, I think you all summarized it really well, page six of your recommendation, in saying, overall, it's a strong value proposition to acquire new technology hardware worth $18 million to a grant that's only going to cost us two. And, and maintenance costs that we already incur because of the laptops, which would perhaps, you know, plus minus what, in a system this large, are negligible amounts to, to make sure that there's maintenance. The one thing I am left with is how we're gonna, what, what kind of oversight is going to exist to ensure that we are meeting these goals? So in the worst-case scenario, when maybe some teachers aren't properly trained to do it, or, you know, need some coaching around that, in the cases where, you know, again, worst-case scenario, I'm thinking as a school board member, in a classroom where that ends up being a crutch and the teacher's not appropriately using it, right? So what kind of oversight are we going to have over the next year, two years, et cetera, as we implement this to ensure that it's meeting our goals?
So thank you, Omeish. First of all, thank you for summarizing everything so well. I think I've heard a constant refrain of guardrails today, right, guardrails and attach that with oversight, that we need to ensure that we're, that we're very clear about what the expectations are, how this fits in, how it, how it should not be used, and then how will we really measure that or, or ensure that there are, people are not disregarding those guardrails? So I'd like you to give us a chance to kind of put that together. I don't want to overpromise here at the table, but, but I definitely hear you and, and definitely sense the, the understanding of the good, but the reservation around how there can be issues.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I think, you know, especially keeping in mind a lot of leadership transition that's going to be happening in our system, things can get, you know, fall between the cracks, maybe we forget that this is something we want to continue monitoring. So just to make sure there's something that's, you know, a touchpoint that's, I don't know, systemically in place, so that we make sure that monitoring's happening. But otherwise, I know that this is all stuff you all are thinking about, too, and we can't allow perfect to be the enemy of the good, we just want to work towards improving this as much as possible. So thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Ms. Omeish. So before I close out the meeting, I do want to raise one very important issue, which is near and dear to my heart, which is digital citizenship. And we haven't talked at all about how we're going to begin digital citizenship discussions and training of all of our students, starting in pre-K. So I would very much appreciate a better understanding, not only of what, where that curriculum is for our youngest learners, but also how we're going to engage parents as partners in the discussion on digital citizenship, because certainly, we have realized in the past year, couple of years, the importance of embedding that digital citizenship piece into all aspects of our curriculum, as well as into our SRNR. So I don't, I think that's an ask, I don't think you're going to get to it tonight, but at some point, I would like a fuller plan from you all on that. So we will be discussing this, this will be a proposal, a motion at our next board meeting, and if you have any questions that you need answered prior to that board meeting, please let us know, we'll do everything we can to get your questions answered. And I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you. And I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.